This meeting to order on July the seventh. I will give a read instructions as to how we should follow. To reduce the spread of COVID nineteen, members of the public are encouraged to view the meetings from their home by video streaming at city's website. Channel seventy charter and channel ninety nine A T and T. The public may participate comment during the meetings by joining the meeting from their computer tablet or telephone. See the city's website for detailed information. And I will read it in Spanish. And so with that, uh, we begin with roll call.
Captain Gomez.
Present.
Gonzalez. Hernandez. Hurst. Parker.
Here.
Okay, uh, moving on to the pledge of allegiance, uh, Lowell, can you lead us in pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
One nation.
One nation.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, we have informational, uh, uh, items. Uh, one A is report of disbursements again is how we're spending our money. C is written reports by council members and we have one from a council member Aurelio regarding the June twenty ninth R T C. And then now we're on to presentations and oral communications. Uh, for those of us that are participating with us, uh, we're going to try something different this time. And what we're doing is we're going to have you directly coming to, uh, speaking to us. And so I will be the one that will be, um, uh, saying, uh, your name. Uh, well, you will need to say your name first is I will be the one seen who raises their hands. So you would need to, uh, turn on your camera and unmute yourself. But before we go on, I saw that Aurelio had a question. Yes, Aurelio?
Yeah, I, I have a question in regards to the miscellaneous documents report. We had a report on, uh, that it came from our alcohol.
Yes. We had three applications.
Three, well, we had one that wanted to remove part of the requirements. It was, what was the outcome on that one for the mi pueblo la caro de las request?
Can anybody answer that one? Uh, maybe Susie?
Yes, hi, trying to get the camera to turn on as well, but it's not for some reason. So, um, yes, the, um, the request to modify the conditions on Cardi, uh, Cardenas market. Those conditions were placed by, uh, A B C and not the city of Watsonville. So, um, we don't have any objection to A B C modifying that condition.
Does it, it, uh, indicated that there was something in our ordinance? And the written language on that.
No, the, um, the restriction on Cardenas had to do with not allowing multiple six packs of beer to be sold so that they could only sell one six pack of beer. So it wasn't anything about container size or anything like that.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so moving on, we are now in terms of oral communications. Uh, and we will begin because I saw him on, on, uh, on our screen, uh, with our first, um, person that wants to share information with us and it's Juan Hidalgo, uh, who is our ag commissioner. Normally we only give three minutes for oral communications and we will give three minutes except for, uh, Mr. Hidalgo. Because in terms of information from the ag commissioner, I think there's plenty that you have to share with us. So, uh, be as brief as you can, but please do share. So Juan, you're on.
Excuse me, before this begins, can I interject real quickly? I have an important question. Um, I'm Elizabeth, I'm part of the community. I want to know why the chat is turned off.
Um, it, it was turned off for all of us because we want to hear your voice instead.
I, I know that the community does rely on it heavily. We communicate as we hear.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, uh, uh.
Uh, can we talk, can we talk to our, our I, uh, I T people?
What you'll need to do, what you need to do, I, I don't remember what your name was that you just, uh, announce yourself. What you'll need to do is you'll need to email me directly and ask me that question, or you can email the city manager, uh, to get a specific answer. But this isn't the opportunity, uh, to do.
Some of us don't want to put our face on camera and we.
You don't have to, you don't have to put yourself, you could only unmute yourself and we could just hear your voice. That's all we, you have to do. Okay, so with that, we'll continue then and ask you, Mr. Hidalgo, if he will, uh, share with us.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Chair, uh, members of the city council. Uh, thank you for the introduction. My name is Juan Hidalgo, Santa Cruz County Agricultural Commissioner. I've been asked to, uh, come before your council today to give you an update on some of the activities. My office has been participating in over the last, uh, few months, uh, to support our farm workers and our growers. As we continue with the COVID nineteen, uh, pandemic, uh, so since April, uh, when things really got going around the pandemic here in our region and in California. Uh, I started, my office has set the opportunity to collaborate with several different agencies with representatives from, uh, the county public health department. Uh, community-based organizations, the Pajar Valley Unified School District, the city of Watsonville. Um, and many other agencies on trying to figure out information that we need to come up with to maintain messaging around. How to keep our farm workers safe and other community members safe as the pandemic continues to evolve. And what we knew back in April, some of that has changed to what we know now. So maintaining messaging and changing the messaging accordingly has been key to be able to keep our farm workers safe as best as we can, uh, working with some of our community partners has been key. As they have the ability to have direct access with many of our farm workers. As, as you know, many of our local programs, whether it's around food distribution or assistance for rent or unemployment services, uh, those partners actually have, are a great way to be able to provide information to our farm workers about what they should be doing to protect themselves. And it's not, it hasn't been just around the general messaging that we all know. It's not just about social distancing and face covering and washing hands, right? I think by now everybody understand that. But the other key thing that I've been working with, with a lot of our local partners has been on coming up with resources that are available to our farm workers that need that information. So those things include how to access food services, how do you sign up for CalFresh, where is that information? So we have come up with a handout that provides our farm workers with that information, both English and Spanish. And it's not just a handout, this has been a collaboration other with our neighbor in Santa Cruz, uh, Monterey County and San Benito County as well. Where they have a similar handout that provides information around those resources that is available to farm workers and other community members that maybe need to access that information. Um, so that has been a really important thing to continue to update as information changes and finding ways on how do we communicate with our community members, with our farm workers. I also have been working with our farm bureau to find ways to, uh, work with our growers so that they know what is the process that the county follows in the event that we have a farm worker that tests positive. What should the grower know? So it's going to be important to know what happens at all those different steps, not only for the grower, but also trying to find ways of how do we communicate with our farm workers so that they understand what resources are available to them, what they should do, what they should know when they test positive. So working with a lot of our community partners to get that message across in a way that can be easily understood has been one of our main efforts the last few months. Um, the other thing that we have been working on is on, uh, distribution of, um, uh, face coverings, um, in a collaboration with the California Department of, uh, uh, Food and Agriculture and California Office of Emergency Services. My office actually has distributed around four hundred and sixty thousand disposable face coverings uh, to our growers. And the whole idea behind that is that, uh, we're, we have been working with our growers over the last few weeks uh, to, um, figure out how many employees they have. And we have been trying to do with the latest distribution with the place about two weeks ago. Uh, we're trying to provide our growers enough disposable face covering so that they can have, um, a supply of thirty days per employee, um, to help to, to, you know, provide some of the protective, uh, equipment that they may need out there in the field to keep people safe. Uh, initially, when this whole thing started, uh, as you can imagine and as you know, there was a lack of available protective equipment. So, uh, the distribution of the face coverings has been a, uh, 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 an important part to help to support our growers and our farm workers so that they can stay safe out in the fields. A lot of growers are also doing their part with not, not just training their employees and implementing some additional safety measures in the field to keep people safe, but also providing some of the face coverings, uh, to keep their people safe. Uh, the other thing that we have been working on my office along with other community partners is the distribution of some of the cloth washable face coverings. So we have distributed more than thirty-five hundred of those. And what we, our target for that has been primarily farm workers. And we have been primarily going to farm worker housing. Uh, so we have been putting packets of information together that has some key handouts from our public health department that talks about face coverings, how to wash them, how to wear them, um, where, where to wear them. And then we have been doing five, uh, cloth face coverings per, per household. Um, so that has been an effort that we have been, uh, doing over the last few weeks. Um, and then the latest collaboration that we have, uh, you know, a lot of the communication, we have handouts and that seems to work really well, but in our day and age with technology. I know a lot of community partners are doing texting and emailing of certain information. So we have been working on finding different ways, um, to disseminate some of that information to community members. And that includes public safe, uh, service announcements from our, uh, county public health department. I know they have been really involved with having some ads on, on the radio, uh, as well to provide that information in Spanish to, to our community members. Um, and then the latest collaboration is we came up with a business card. And this is something that they, uh, started doing back in Monterey County, maybe a few weeks back. It's a business card that we can pass out to our farm workers and community partners that contains information about symptoms of COVID nineteen, um, where people can seek medical assistance here in Santa Cruz County, as well as where people can get tested. And also it includes some key information about, uh, resources such as, uh, unemployment, uh, food bank. Um, so that, that way people can, they don't have to carry a piece of paper with them, or if they lose the piece of paper, it's a nice little business card, two-sided that they can keep in their pocket and be able to access it whenever they need it. So, um, this has been an evolving situation as we transition from sheltering place a few months back and a few weeks back to a reopening of the economy. Some of that messaging has to change and so I think we need to adjust and provide some of that information to our community members, our farm workers so that they know, uh, you know, and they keep in mind some of those things that are low risk and high risk to do as they go about, um, you know, doing their shopping or going to the park with their families. Um, and potentially, um, you know, continuing with some of the messaging about not gathering in groups. Um, so those are some of the things that I, I've been working with, with many of our community partners. Um, you know, consist, trying to maintain some consistent messaging as we work together in our community so that, um, that information that we're passing out to community members is not confusing, has been one of our goals. We also have created, uh, shared Google Drive where all of us can share information and we all are in agreement with what handouts, what information is the best information to share with community that we feel, um, is the most important that we feel is going to continue to maintain consistent messaging, uh, to continue to provide and support our farm workers in, in Santa Cruz County in the Watsonville area. Um, so I wanted to give you a brief update on that and, um, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have for me.
Thank you. The information you gave us is just truly valuable and really appreciate about all the messages, messaging you're doing for our farm workers. But because this is public oral communications, uh, we're not able to ask you questions. But each of the council members has agreed to email you or, or text you or call you, uh, with any questions that they might have. So thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, uh, again, this is time for oral communications from the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council on non-agenda items? And, and if you want to address the council, you can just, uh, uh, mute, uh, your, your audio. And should you choose, you could also, uh, put on your camera, but you don't have to.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like, real quick.
Uh, I heard a yes first, uh, so let's go with the yes, and I don't know who that yes was.
That would be Steve Treheal.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, I would like to address the council this afternoon and turn their attention to the Monday front page of our local newspaper, the Paharonian, which stated hundreds of calls to the police department about Fourth of July fireworks. I'm afraid we're going to revisit this more than once, although Paco and Rebecca have agreed to, uh, at least address the subject to find alternate ways for nonprofit groups to raise money such as already made food products, patriotic regalia and personal protective equipment, which they could have done this year. But instead, we have all kinds of supposedly safe and sane fireworks, a lot of illegal ones, causing the police endless hassle and endless numbers of calls to try and track down the sources of these fire hazards, safety hazards. Folks, it's not worth it. It's time for us to join the rest of the county and dump these menaces. Once and for all, we do not need them. They are not an appropriate way to celebrate a holiday. And all it does is give rise to people such as a gentleman, and I use the term, uh, loosely in freedom who decided to shoot his pistol into the ground and the bullet bounces next door and nearly hits a ten-year-old girl. This is insane, folks. We can do without it. We're a better community without it. And I'm pleading with the police chief, the mayor, the city council, city manager to please use common sense. Let's join the twenty-first century. We're supposedly following a green agenda. Uh, we need to have a green agenda, in fact, not just in theory. And while we're talking about twenty-first, um, twenty-first century, Hollister flew on Pride Day its first gay flag. Now, I've already received a message from, I think it was Paco or perhaps it was Rebecca or maybe both, that they'd be willing to do, uh, to address a flag, uh, policy that fly, the flags that fly over the city hall. Because we're not stuck in that past either. And there needs to be some room for various holidays that are appropriate and that celebrate positively the achievements of various segments of our population in order to fly their flag above the city hall for at least one day. It's long overdue, folks, and we, again, we need to join the twenty-first century. It's not nineteen twenty, it's twenty twenty. And finally, in closing, I want to thank Juan Hidalgo for a very good detailed description of what his agency has been doing. And I thank him very much. I'm sure the farm workers thank him as well because he is helping to keep them informed and help, helping to keep them safe from harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, before I take the next, uh, person, I just want to remind the public that you need to keep your, um, camera and your audio off, uh, unless you speak. Only turn them on when you speak. And so I heard a woman say she wanted to speak and so, uh, go ahead and, and go forward.
Yes, hi, my name's Elizabeth. I'm from District Seven. I just, I really want to reiterate the importance of the chat and how heavily the community has relied on it for the last few weeks. We communicate, we meet each other, we organize, we heavily rely on the community through this chat during these meetings. I'm not a hundred percent sure what has changed since I've attended the meetings before and this has never been a problem. Um, I'd like to know what we have to do to change it because it, I find it silencing that we cannot speak to each other um, while we're here when we have been doing so for weeks. That's, so that's, that's my main concern. How can we continue this meeting when we can't communicate with each other?
Thank you, and I would, uh, encourage you again to email me directly or the city manager directly so we can give a response to that question, okay?
The meeting is happening now, Rebecca. It's not, like.
Elizabeth, it's not going to change now. It's not.
That's what I'm saying, and this is an important.
Okay, uh, I guess she's gone now. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to address the council on agenda items, uh, on items that are not on the agenda?
Uh, yes, I would like to, if there's a moment.
Go ahead, identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Drew Rogers. I live at forty-two Costanzo Street in Watsonville.
Okay, Drew, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to bring up the, um, a thing that happened very recently that I think does concern all of us in a slightly different way. And that's the idea of eminent domain for, not just for highways, rail and other things, but also for old growth trees within the city limits. And as some of you know, um, a grove of old growth redwoods were cut down and they did not need a permit in our city, very close to here. And many people, including those who that affected, were saddened by it. I was devastated by it only because, well, for many reasons, the intrinsic value of these old growth trees are something we can't replace. But also the value of environmentally, um, including animals that might live in it, shade for the elderly. And, um, and excuse me, just their, um, the CO2 impact as well. So I think like with other cities, that we should seriously consider implementing some sort of policy to protect uh, particular kinds of trees. It doesn't have to be all trees, but there's many cities, including Santa Cruz, that not only need a permit for this, but there is also a replanting process as well as other guidelines as far as what you can and cannot cut down regardless of whether you own the property or not. Um, that's one thing. The other thing was, if you don't mind my adding another subject to this.
Seventeen minutes, seconds.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to find out about the, uh, uh, slow streets in, uh, Watsonville. What's going on with that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Drew. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on items not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to oral communications from the council. And I'll be calling on Paco, Trina, Aurelio, Ari, Lowell and Felipe. So we'll start with Paco.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I hope everyone's doing well. I want to thank everyone for joining us on today's council meeting. I just wanted to spend my, uh, minutes to acknowledge that, uh, uh, the community lost a great, uh, leader and in the education field, his name is Federico Castañeda. He was, uh, a mentor for me growing up. I met him at H A Hyde. He was one of the few, uh, people there that really took an interest in, in my group of friends and, and, uh, all of us as young people and the organized sports and the, he really made a huge impact and difference in our lives. And we were shocked by the sudden, um, by the sudden, uh, passing of Federico. And so, uh, I, I still had the opportunity to see Federico, uh, growing up. He, he was my wife's, uh, office neighbor at Watsonville High. They were both counselors there. And so, um, I just wanted to send my condolences out to his family, his friends, the mandilones who I know are, are hurting right now. And, um, just to, just to, once again, repeat that we, we really did lose an asset, a community asset. I'm truly saddened by his, um, by his death. And, uh, if, if the council will indulge me, I, I'd just like to spend the remainder of my time, uh, in silence to honor his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Paco. I know I've had lots and lots of people approach me about him. And they are all, uh, saying what you have shared with us. Okay, let's continue with, uh, Trina.
Mayor, I'll pass so that we can make it more productive for, um, this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Aurelio.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, thank everybody for attending tonight's, uh, city council meeting. I also like to thank Paco for bringing up Federico. Uh, yeah, we did lose a, a, a very important man in our community. Uh, I interfaced with him in the past. Uh, he's a great gentleman, uh, be greatly missed. And my condolences to him, to his family, um, and, and our, render with the rest of my moments.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on, Ari.
I'll make it short. I'll keep my eye on the clock. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, please remember to wear a mask. I hate to be a broken record, but I'm a teacher and I do it so well. Please remember to wear a mask whenever you're out in public. Um, thank you for those people who spent some of their Fourth of July, uh, filling out the census. So that's awesome, but we see, we need a little bit more and we're doing great. I also want to thank, um, uh, my welcoming neighbors out at Vista Montana who, uh, were so gracious to me on the Fourth of July when I was out and about. And, uh, to my mom and, uh, and, and thank them for their input on the, all the things that are happening in Watsonville. Um, and, uh, and, uh, this is a moment and I hope Steve is listening, but I agree with you, Steve, about those fireworks. I'm a hundred percent, uh, uh, in agreement with you. The fireworks were like a war zone this year. I've never heard it so loud in my entire life. And I know that we're all hurting in, in different ways, and this was a way of expressing some energy. But it was, uh, it was a difficult thing. Um, and I just want the, the public to know that we're all, all of us on city council are thinking about you because we all live here. And, and, uh, we all experienced everything from, uh, the wonderful sales that happen for all our nonprofits and our sports teams and everything and the safe and sane way in, uh, in which families, um, use their fireworks to those people who brought illegal fireworks into this, uh, city and put people in danger. Um, but, uh, thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Ari. Moving on to Lowell.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and I want to thank, uh, ag commissioner Hidalgo for his strong defense and of, uh, farm workers in our, our community and his support for agriculture and information. You know, the stress of, uh, COVID is, is still pretty bad out there. You can see it. You can see it in people's faces. You can see it in their behavior and their actions. You can see it in the supermarket. You can see it, uh, in the public view. People have, uh, are losing patience. They're a little stressed out. They're, they have raw nerves. And so we have to be aware of that and, and that, you know, it's, it's a tough go out there and we're, we're, we're hopefully, uh, moving in the right direction. But it is a tough go as, uh, you hear from the governor and our local officials. Just yesterday, I heard that one of my, uh, long-term friends had, uh, passed away of COVID. Some gentleman I'd known for thirty years, uh, he didn't live here in the area, but, uh, he, but, he. Some gentleman I'd known for thirty years, uh, he didn't live here in the area, but he, but he did, uh. He formally was uh, of the area, and so it's, it's always pretty shocking. So let's um, let's be safe. Let's be considerate of others and uh, let's try and extend our patience as much as we can. Thank you all.
Thank you Lowell. Uh, moving on to Felipe.
Thank you. Uh, first I want to thank the uh, all the uh, airport staff and the pilots and volunteers. It was a beautiful flyover that they had, Fourth of July flyover that they had on Saturday. Uh, I also want to thank all the volunteers at the VFW for putting up the flags on Freedom Boulevard. Uh, they do that every, every Veterans Day, Memorial Day and Fourth of July. They put them at, at five AM and take them down at five PM. I'm going to thank all the volunteers and especially Barbie Gomez for gathering volunteer, over two dozen volunteers to put up flags. At all the local cemeteries as well. Uh, speaking of, I also want to point out that there's several uh, community organizations. Um, actually, all the community organizations that have buildings are kind of in a hard time right now. Whether it's your local, um, you know, Alps or, or American Legion or um. Or in this case, a VFW post that relies on, on rentals and, and building rentals. For quinceañeras, for weddings, bodas, stuff like that. You know, they're having a hard time because of COVID and they rely on those rentals. And so right now, uh, VFW is having a, a GoFundMe and I want to invite people to donate to VFW. Uh, their, their GoFundMe page is, you can Google it and find it directly at Operation VFW Post seventeen sixteen. That's Operation VFW Post seventeen sixteen, or you can find them on Facebook. That's VFW Post seventeen sixteen. VFW Post seventeen sixteen. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you Felipe. Uh, Save Our Shores had a panel discussion to address the movie twenty forty. That addressed all the possibilities and opportunities to address climate change. Paco and I were two of the five panelists, and the question that was given to us was what opportunity can be given? To small farmers who want to be part of the solution rather than a problem as seen in the movie. And I'm pleased to say uh, that as we update and revise our climate action plan to become a climate action and adaptation plan. The agricultural industry will be a stakeholder who can provide education on climate change to the farmers because some farmers. Don't understand how their farming can help climate change. They can also give techniques and strategies on how to sequester the carbon from the atmosphere and place in the soil. Carbon in the soil gives more vitality to the soil. So I'm excited about the work that we're going to do to address climate change. And invite all of you in the public, if you're interested in participating in this process, stay tuned because we're going to be inviting you. Uh, to be part of the process in developing our climate action and adaptation plan. And so with that, that concludes my uh, report, and now I'm on to proclamations. And the first proclamation is going to go to Parks and Recs because you may not know that July is Parks and Recreation Month. And I'm going to read just a few wherasses. Whereas parks and recreation programs are vital, uh, vital important to. Establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our city, contributing to its economic and environmental well-being. And ensuring, ensuring the health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation contributes to the community economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base. Increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our city. And serve as places for everyone to connect with nature and enjoy outdoor activities. I now therefore Rebecca Garcia, mayor of the city of Watsonville in the state of California on behalf of the city council. Hereby declare July twenty twenty Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Watsonville. And recognize the invaluable work being done by all the staff and volunteers in this department. And I invite Nick, if you're there, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you mayor and members of the city council, Nick Calabacca, Parks and Community Services Director for the city of Watsonville. Uh, yes, thank you very much for this proclamation. Uh, July is the month that. Agencies across the United States celebrate the, the great work that Parks and Recreation uh, agencies do for. Communities across the country. It's an opportunity to really reflect on. Um, our work in enhancing the quality of life throughout all of our communities, and this year's theme is we are Parks and Recreation. Um, COVID nineteen has had a profound effect on our operations, forcing the closure of many of our programs and services, but we are resilient. Uh, we have adapted programs to run virtually and adjusted our in-person programs to requirements placed on us by county and state health orders. And we've continued to ensure that our parks and open spaces remain open, accessible and safe through this pandemic. Twenty twenty has definitely thrown us for a loop, but we are Parks and Recreation and we are strong, confident, selfless, passionate, driven and essential. With that being said, I'd like to introduce Imelda Negrete, our Recreation Superintendent, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the special things that we have planned for the month of July.
Hi, everyone. Um, this is Imelda. Okay, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So um, with our current pandemic, we are actually celebrating Parks and Recreation Month a little different this year. We have posted a calendar on our website with various activities where our community can tag us on social media. And we'll be randomly selecting winners each week. We also have Rex, our department mascot. Who will be visiting neighborhoods throughout the city and handing out goodies to our youth. So if you see him, make sure you say hi. Um, actually today he's um, visiting um, District One, starting at two o'clock. And then on Thursday, he'll be visiting um, District Two. So every Tuesday and Thursday, he'll be alternating the districts. Um. So aside from that, I, I invite you to visit our. Website, watsonmorec.com, including our virtual recreation center, which happens to be the house for our virtual summer camp for our kids. Um, for up-to-date activities planned and join us as we celebrate Park Week Life Better. Thank you.
Thank you, Esmeralda. Okay, I'll now read my uh, next proclamation. We're going to lose a very, very special person, Carol Hidesix. She has been with our library for thirty-five years of service, and I'll read just a few wherasses. Whereas Carol joined the city in nineteen eighty-four as a senior librarian, was reclassified to principal librarian in two thousand. And promoted to library director in two thousand and five and whereas Carol has guided the library through many changes in the last three decades. Including playing a key role in the opening of the Freedom Branch Library as well as managing the transition to the new library in two thousand and seven. And whereas on a typical day, the library can be seen bustling with activities such as talks on local history. Lego building and literacy classes for youth and beautiful art projects. I now therefore Rebecca J Garcia, mayor of the city of Watsonville in the state of California. On behalf of the city council hereby recognize Carol Hidesix for her thirty-five years of dedicated service to the Watsonville Library. Acknowledging her outstanding work as director and wishing her health and happiness in her well-deserved retirement. Carol, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, well, this is um. I'm glad you can't see me because I'm crying here. Um. It has been a real pleasure. Um, I took a trip one day over the hill. Um, I'm from Santa Fe and I took a trip. To Monterey with my husband and I saw a job application for a children's librarian in Watsonville and I didn't know where Watsonville was at the time. And we took a little trip up, up the coast and I found this beautiful little city that um. Was very much actually like the Santa Fe of my childhood, not at all now, but um, and I fell in love and I applied for the job and um. I came here and I found a great place to work and to um. To become a part of a community that I think is, is the nicest I have ever, I have ever seen. It has been. Um, a real honor and um. I'm gonna miss it, but um, thank you all for um, all of the support you've given, not just to me. But to the library, which is an essential part of any community. And I think the library that you have here in Watsonville is um, really, really great. And you have a wonderful staff that's going to continue into the future with a lot of great things happening and I'm really excited to see what, what happens going forward. Although I must say the last four months have not been what I expected my last four months of um, librarianship to be. But um, I think we've come through and we've done a really fine job. So anyway, thank you very much and thank you for the gracious words, Rebecca. I appreciate.
Thank you to you. With any of the other council members, I could say a few words. Uh, Paco, uh, Paco, Lowell, and then Ari.
And then Aurelio. Just thank you mayor. I care, I just want to thank you for, for everything you've uh, you've done for our community. Our library is really uh, one of the crown jewels i- in our community. And uh, you know, even though maybe you didn't know me then, uh, I'm positive that you, you helped me in so many ways as. Uh, the library is just a place where I spent my youth, my college years. Uh, just a great welcoming place where I was able to, to improve, uh, self-improvement and just really pursue my, my passions and my goals and. Maybe even just read a, a comic book or something. So thank you for, for building that, that library and uh, making it uh, something that we're all proud of. And uh, uh, just a place for everyone. So I wish you uh, the best moving forward and um, I just hope we, we will still see you around. Uh, in our community. So thank you for everything.
Okay, moving on to uh, Lowell.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much Carol for coming to us uh, back in nineteen eighty-four. That was a long time ago and. You've certainly contributed greatly to this community and we all say thank you very much and we hope you'll stick around and uh, advise us and help us out in the future. Great, great job. Thank you.
Ari.
Um, and Carol, I just want to say my whole career has been here when your whole career has been here. You're a little ahead of me on the game and I'm a teacher. I want to say thank you on behalf of all the students and teachers. Who've utilized our library system, as Paco said, you know, gone into study to look up, to research, to need help and um. I can't tell you the countless number of lives that you have helped to be successful. In small ways and big ways, but most of all, just been there uh, with a helping hand. And uh, and the processes that you put in place for so many kids. So I just want to say thank you.
Aurelio.
Yeah, again, uh, Carol, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I remember the old library. Uh, it was a welcoming place, and I also remember the, the big community line that was created. To go from the old library to the new, new library and how books were handed from hand to hand. And Paco might have been that little kid there standing there not knowing that he was handing a book over, but. You know, you've done so much for our community, uh, and like I said this in the past, our, our library is a reflection of our community. Uh, so seeing our library is so welcoming to everybody, that's how our community is and that's what you've created here in the city of Watsonville. So thank you very much. And thank you for all your service and enjoy your retirement, but don't forget us. Come back, check out a book.
Okay, Felipe.
Hello Carol. Thank you. I got the opportunity to serve with you as a library commissioner and now the library finance committee. You know, I really want to thank you for everything you've done. You know, you've really transformed our entire library, you know. You know, right now it's more than just a library. Really, it's, it's like a, it's like a senior center. You know, it's a children's center and it's like a de facto, even, even like a de facto homeless center. You know, and thank you for being so instrumental in the creation of, of the Freedom Library to provide resources for people in. You know, that part of, of the community, and also you're so instrumental in, in, from the get-go, right? In, in the funding creation for, for getting that library in the first place, you know. So thank you for everything, everything that you did. Uh, you know, you're the base of that library. Uh, from the very, very first uh, uh, brick on that library, you're the foundation of it. Thank you so much for everything you've done. And you know, I hope you, you, you uh, stick around and, and volunteer and hang out with us there, maybe with the friends of the library or something. But yes, thank you so much.
Trina, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
First certainly, um, I have a lot most amount of respect for Carol and all of the passion that she's put into this community. And for all of the lives that she's had an impact with. I, I know that going to the library after school was pretty much a staple for many of us. And uh, what she's done to make sure she's brought that to the next level with the location we have it now. And all of the, the efforts and um, heart that she's put into this, I'm really grateful for um, all of that effort on her part. And I'm sure that there's going to be a commission available if we've got her in one of the districts here. So. We, we um, commend you on your work and your service and uh, we, we wish you a very, very. Happy, productive and fruitful and enjoyable retirement. So thanks again for all of your work and effort.
Again, thank you so much Carol. So we're going to be moving on to uh, reports out of closed session. Our attorney now, Alan.
Thank you mayor. There were three items on tonight's closed session. The first one is anticipated litigation. And the council authorized the filing of a receivership. Uh, ex-party against uh, the owner of twenty-one Arthur Road. To um, essentially clean up the nuisance and uh, get the property under control. The second item I want to report on is a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, and that's Ortiz and Casimiro. Versus Watsonville and Vasquez. The council authorized. Uh, attorneys to file an answer on behalf of the city and Mr. Vasquez, a city employee, and so we will do that. The third item on the closed session is personal matter, city attorney, performance evaluation, and there is no final action to report out of that.
Thank you for that. Uh, moving on then, it's reports to council, no actions required, and our first one is. Uh, community oversight and engagement report by Police Chief Honda.
Uh, mayor, council members, members of the public and city staff. Uh, thanks for allowing me to give you an oral update on our, our process for oversight and community engagement. So community concerns during this national unrest regarding police oversight. Uh, systemic racism, city budget allocations and, and other concerns facing our community during this unprecedented time. Uh, have compelled us to develop a process where community dialogue can occur as beyond the limits, limited input that we can get as. See the lea- leadership during like regular council sessions. So we want to frame a public discussion and invite public input to improve trust between the community and their government. Uh, by ensuring public confidence through accountability and transparency. Now, the goal is to deliver the most professional and effective services possible to the community of Watsonville. So we've broken up this process into two different sections. Uh, the first, the first one I'm going to talk about is the COPA House Meetings. Now, this is going to be completely facilitated, organized and scheduled by COPA. And for those of you who do not know who COPA is, COPA stands for Communities Organized for Relational Power in Action. COPA is a regional nonprofit organization consisting of between twenty-five and thirty member institutions across Monterey. Santa Cruz and San Benito Counties. And so within these member institutions, it, it involves congregations, schools, nonprofits, unions. And through this process, COPA develops leaders capable of working together to address issues affecting their families in our communities. So COPA is also an independent, respected grassroots organization that gathers input from. A broad and diverse base of community members via their membership and also through house meetings. And so this process of house meetings is basically COPA brings together a couple leaders. Um, and they bring together leaders with a diverse cross-section of the community. With their government representatives and leaders to have dialogue. Uh, much of which involves stories, stories that people tell of issues they've had with their police. Or with other governing parts of their community, and it provides a platform for people to have a voice. But it also is a, a platform for government to hear the concerns of their community. So as we move forward, COPA is coordinating um, ten house meetings. Uh, I don't know what the schedule is yet, but it's, it's tentatively scheduled to, to start or begin in mid-August. Now, the second half of this uh, process. Now, the second half of this uh process is an ad hoc committee. So the ad hoc committee will be responsible for creating a model of oversight and a platform of input for the city of Watsonville. And the committee will consist of council members appointed by the mayor, uh city department members, community members representing a broad representation of our community. Uh, the commi- the committee will gather additional input from community members and organizations that may or may not have been able to participate in the Copa ten-house meetings. And so uh as we work through this, the committee will bring together input received through Copa and also address any finance, financial or legal or logistical issues. Um, and the ad hoc committee will also uh be there to vet important topics that need to be addressed in order for this model uh that we come up with to be effective. Um, topics like how many people are needed, uh term limits, qualifications of people to be on the committee if there are any uh authority of the committee to audit, investigate, subpoena or mandate policy uh within the city or within the police department. Um, other topics that might involve training the committee and and the availability of legal counsel uh and also provide, hopefully provide a detailed budget to support whichever model is formed. Because I think if we're going to be effective in this, we have to fund it. We have to put our money where our mouth is. There all, the committee will also review various models and best practices throughout the state and the country to to develop a process specific to Watsonville's needs. And then at the end, they'll uh the ad hoc committee will come up with a recommendation to present to the city council for approval. Um, and just for everyone, uh the ad hoc committee will fall under the Brown Act, so meetings will be posted uh to allow for public attendance and public input. So, um although we don't know exactly what this model will uh be developed or how it will look like, I believe this model that we come up with, um, I think it's going to go way beyond just police oversight, but potentially an intersectional committee that can also address the growing racial systemic uh and socio-economic issues that we must confront as a community together. Um, so with that, that concludes my oral updates and I'll open it up to any questions from the council.
So at this time, uh we will take uh questions from the council and we're going to have Trina, Aurelio, Ari, Lowell, Felipe and Paco. So Trina.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Now, when you, when you mentioned best practices, um are you also going to give us an idea of maybe, maybe even a a dialogue with us about um a a survey of what we feel we think are are working effectively? So that there's part of that of of how we can look at that as a A best practice that we are actually doing in this community? Because obviously, there's there, there's a, there's a lot of systems out there that are not working effectively and there are some that do very well. And I I also want to make sure that those policies and processes that the city of Watsonville conducts under you that are doing well are are brought to the the top of the surface because we don't need to rehash everything from from the the basement all the way up when things are really working productively. But we need to make sure that we're encouraging and and um letting, letting the community know what we're really doing well. Would that be part of this process?
So yes, to answer your question, I believe we'll receive a lot of input from the Copa process, but also the ad hoc committee. Um, their responsibility is really to vet all these different processes through. So throughout the state and the country, there are so many different models regarding auditors, commissions, hybrids. Um, so really, each city has its own in issues. And I think for Watsonville, we need to make sure that however we create this um commission or committee, that it addresses the needs in Watsonville, if that makes sense. So, yes, that'll be brought up. I am not actually going to be running the ad hoc committee. I don't think I should. Uh, will participate in it. Um, I think that'll be determined on who's going to facilitate and run the actual committee itself. Um, since I am and my department is a focus, a big part of it and the focus of a lot of the issues, um I think there should be a different person running it and that's that's what we're going to come up with. I hope that answers your question.
Um, I I think it does. And will this ad hoc committee also be participating with Copa in terms of whether meeting the this ad hoc will sort of rotate around to the different Copa sessions so that they can get a feel for um all of the different sessions? Because each of them have a little different flavor about them and they may be able to gather more information and bring um to the table um for this process. Will that be working out as well with this committee?
Well, so.
I mean, I don't know who's.
So I don't know who's going to be assigned to the ad hoc committee yet. But as we move forward with the ten-house meetings, uh if we do have the committee in process, I I would hope that all of them would attend all the ten-house meetings. But even beyond that, I think, I I'm hoping that the entire council will attend as many meetings as possible because this is very important for you as elected officials representing your committee or your community. So yes, I don't know for sure because we haven't formed the ad hoc committee yet. Um, we're still waiting to proceed with that. But yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to add, uh Trina, that I I met with two of the pastors uh because it's really religious uh faith community. I met with two of the pastors and their uh team and they have a a high expectation that as many uh council members, whether you're on the ad hoc committee or not, will participate in their house meetings. Yes.
Thank you. And then uh the uh the timeline that you can expect us to sort of roll us out and be able to return and then sort of like regroup as we go along? That that's one of the questions. The other question is, uh is there a cost to a budget for us to to start this process? So that we have some idea, you know, or shape or form of, is this going to cost us as a community to put this together? Or maybe it's fundraising that we need to do. So what would that be if there's anything that may be incurred about the budget?
So to answer your first question, uh the timeline, I I don't know exactly the timeline because this is a a very um convoluted process to make sure we do it right. I can't tell you that uh tentatively scheduled for mid-August is when I believe Copa is going, going to start their ten-house meetings and I believe that takes uh between three and four months to complete the townhouse meetings. Um, but in the, in the, at the same time and probably pursue afterwards, when they get input from Copa, there's going to be a process where the ad hoc committee has to vet through all the material they're going. They're getting from not only Copa, but also all the legal issues that might be involved, all the budgetary issues. And so when we're talking about budget, I don't think, the beginning of the process, I don't think is going to cost any money. It's just really our time that we commit to the process itself. Um, and I can't answer how much it's going to cost in the future because I think that's needs to be developed by the ad hoc committee itself. But I would suspect that it, if if the city is serious about doing a model that's really effective, it might entail some uh costs uh forming it and and moving forward after the ad hoc committee has made its choices.
Thank you. That's last my questions, Mayor.
Okay, uh Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, two of my questions were asked by Trina, the timeline, uh creating this ad hoc committee and and going to these uh the Copa Ted Holmes meetings. Uh, and the other one was the budgetary, uh how are we going to fund this and how are we going to support it? Um, obviously, you know, we need to look at that in the long run. Uh, I think it's good stuff we're taking as a community. Uh, and and this is a going to be a a long process uh to get good results. Uh, we really need to come together as a community and that's everybody, all the stakeholders here. Uh, all the neighbors need to come out and and really participate and be willing to do it in the long haul. This is not just come to one meeting and want to resolve all the problems. Uh, and and that's what I hope that the committee understands. If if you're going to be engaged, get ready to be engaged for two years, three years, four years, five years, ten years. Because this is going to be a continuous thing. They always continue to look at how we can improve the system. So there's not the systematic racism, that we don't have conflicts with our peace officers and we reuse our resources and our funding in a better manner for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to Ari.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I, most of my questions have been covered. Uh, and I know it's something new that we're creating for Watsonville, but I can't help but think that this is going to be an amazing experience for everyone involved. And uh it's going to be informative and inclusive and uh and and it's going to bring together community, exactly what Councilman Gonzalez just said. And uh I'm excited to be a participant and be a part of those Copa meetings uh and uh I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, Lowell.
I just want to thank Chief Honda and all his staff, both the sworn officers and the non-sworn officers that that keep us all safe. And so let's move forward and let's be a real community together. Thanks for listening to everybody.
Okay, I don't see his picture, but uh Felipe, are you there? Well, uh, I guess uh he's gone. I do have a question. First, I want to say that uh when I first approached you and Matt about uh this uh adventure, I'm calling it adventure, a journey. Uh, you readily, readily says, oh, yes, uh, we must do this because uh you are really committed to our community and even though you know there's a lot of wonderful things our police department uh does, you also recognize that it could even be better and you were very open to it. My question is, when I presented this to you, I also talked about a community forum to invite the entire community separate from Copa. Is that going to still be a possibility?
I believe that could be a possibility, Mayor. I I I believe that's a decision that we can make uh with the ad hoc committee to um somewhere in the process, we could do a a large community forum to do presentations and also uh listen to the community about what the model's starting to look like. So yes, I think that I would leave that up to the committee to decide when and where.
Okay, very, very good. And and uh before I go to the public, what I want to say is um even though it was my idea or I recommended it, I have decided not to be part of the ad hoc committee, so I will be appointing three of you. And so if you're interested in being in part of this uh ad hoc committee, let Beatrice, Beatrice know that you are interested and um I will select uh three of you if there's more than three. Okay? So moving on, uh it's time for the public input. So is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item?
Yes, yes. First of all, I want very much to thank our police chief for his outstanding work to the community. I was impressed immediately when, the first time I met him. And uh, don't get too big ahead, David, but yeah, you've done a great job. And I've always felt great confidence in you that you have the best. Um, uh, you, you have the best intentions, but also you carry through with them for our community. And um your intelligence and your wisdom and your restraint in terms of working with individuals that appear to be in distress in the community who may have to be arrested, I commend you and your police force. Uh, you've done a wonderful job because you're non-confrontational. And unfortunately, a lot of big cities just haven't learned that, but let's face it, we have a lot of big cities with some very racist white cops. Sorry to say that, but it is true, folks. Fortunately, Watsonville is not in that category. And this idea is an excellent one. It's probably long overdue, but the main thing is it's now coming to fruition. And I thoroughly support it and also would like to point out to uh the audience, if they're listening, uh we've only actually had one murder in this uh city so far this year, I believe. That was the very, very, very beginning of the year. Uh, and unfortunately, there was another person in custody, uh who was taken into custody, a homeless person who apparently killed someone, an older person in Paharo. But for the most part, this is a very safe city. And one reason why is because the police officers work so very hard to try to work with those individuals that appear to be in distress, whether it's mental illness, whether it's alcoholism or a drug addiction problem, whether it's domestic violence. And they do not simply pull out a taser or a gun or a baton and start uh using it like they do, oh, say, in Chicago, which they do regularly. And of course, that's why their murder rate runs in this seven hundred and eight hundred numbers of of numbers of people per year murdered there. We don't have that issue. So again, um, we need to remember that, yes, uh, police have to meet certain criteria in order for us to trust them because this is Jean Jacques Rousseau's The Social Contract. For those of you whoever took uh political science or philosophy in college. And it is a social contract. I think the police chief understands it. And again, I know Mayor Garcia and the city council understand it. And again, this is a very good plan, a very good idea, and I commend all of you for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item?
Yeah, my name is Ciclani.
What is your name again?
Ciclani.
Okay, Ciclani.
Um, I do want to mention that this meeting is being held earlier than usual. Um, and a lot of the community did not know that this conversation was happening. Um, and I think it's important that um, community members know about the conversations that are happening. Um, a lot of folks are working at the moment. And so we're talking about inviting a dialogue or creating dialogue with with the police department. Yet people are not, you know, aware that this is happening at the moment. Um, in regards to the house meetings that will be happening, I think it's important to take into consideration that when um, they are being hosted, that there are a few meetings um where police um are not um attending or I would also include um political figures just because um, not everyone feels comfortable being open about their experiences. Meanwhile, cops are present. Um, you know, our police department may not be blatantly um racist, like someone earlier mentioned. Um, but our community is heavily policed. It is disproportionately policed. Um, Watsonville, you know, it it, it takes up thirty-five percent of of Santa Cruz County population. But in the juvenile system, um, it is a lot higher than that. And that is um a reflective that our youth are being overpoliced. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item?
Yes. Hi, my name's Elizabeth. I'm from District Seven.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
So um, I first asked that I am allotted my time. Earlier, I was muted when I still had time left on the clock. Um, I do have some questions. I want to know if the community will have input on who is in on this committee. I've already heard that there is room to manipulate who ends up on it, so I want to know what steps we're taking to ensure that that doesn't happen. Who is invited um to these meetings? Pastors do not represent the community. I want to know if you have progressive community members that have been invited so far. Um, I also want to know about the, any future funding? Can we establish that it can come from WPD's overfunded department? Asking the community to fund um this oversight committee to keep them accountable is, it's ridiculous in my opinion when they already have so much money as it is. Um, Chief Honda, I do want to see policies that show that you are truly dedicated to materially improving the lives of our community like you have stated before. It is clear that city council and PVUSD are more concerned with the relationship with your overfunded department and the effects of overpolicing our community. I'm asking you, Chief Honda, to make an actual statement. I want you to work with Captain McKinley and end the SRO program on your end. If PVUSD won't do it for our children, your overfunded department is literally taking the money out of our children's education fund and by standing by and letting it happen, you are just continuing what we already have, which is not working. I, I, I did hear earlier saying that we do not have to worry about WPD like we have to worry about other police departments. I myself, as a community member, have believed that before. Now that I see who we work with, specifically Oakland Police Department, I see that that is not true. I have had community members come up to me and personally expressed excessive force by the WPD. I have had community members come up to me and personally expressed excessive force by the WPD, sexual harassment claims by the WPD. I do believe that it is time that we, as a community, can oversee these things and keep them accountable. I do not believe the city should be paying for it when they already have so much money. And Chief Honda, I am seriously expecting you to make actual change, not just proclaim it. More of the same is more of the same. Something drastic needs to be done. We do not need to rely on mutual aid from corrupt police departments. Oakland PD murders our women, they rape our women, they have been in prostitution rings. This has all been known for decades. And WPD is in bed with them, and that is an embarrassment to the community. I ask that you end it.
Thank you for your comments, Elizabeth. Are there anybody else in the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item?
Um, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jessica, and I, I also want to echo something that was said earlier. I had no idea that this meeting was starting at two. And I feel like it's really important to really have everybody there to talk about an issue like this. I totally missed the whole dialogue that was going on. I just got here for public comment. And it's unfortunate because now I don't have a full-on comment to give to you guys because I didn't hear any, any of the dialogue prior. So I feel like it's important for us to have these meetings when people are able to, you know, attend them. Either you have them at your regular six o'clock time. You know, I, I think it's important to get everybody's dialogue, not just people who are not working or are retired. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, for your comments. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we will now go on to our next item, which is a city manager's update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm just bringing up my screen. Thinking about it. Hold on one moment. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, excuse me, it's not responding. So let me try something else. Okay, Council, thank you for your patience. I appreciate the opportunity to provide another update for all of you and the community during these very busy times that we find ourselves in. As of today, in terms of our COVID nineteen regional update, we have about two point nine million confirmed cases in the United States. Santa Cruz County updated our case count today, now reflecting five hundred and one cases in Santa Cruz County. We continue to see increases over the past couple of weeks. And in fact, Monday, we reported again our single highest increase in cases of thirty-seven new cases. Two hundred and fifty-nine cases have been attributed to Watsonville. And again, that reflects about fifty-one percent of the total cases in Santa Cruz County, even though Watsonville represents about twenty-five percent of the total county population. And eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds are still representing the largest age group within those cases. The state health order is now aligned with the county order. The county health officer has allowed the local health order to expire on July sixth. As the council community knows, beaches had been reopened just prior to the Fourth of July holiday. And the county shelter in place order is now completely aligned with the state's stay-at-home order. Facial coverings are still in place. And important to note that just over the last week, the, the state's reusable bag order has expired. That means that grocery stores and businesses now have the ability to allow reusable bags if they so choose. Some markets and grocery stores in the area are allowing bags with safety protocols and guidelines. Others are not. And so I just encourage community members to check with their local grocery store to determine whether or not they're allowing you to start using reusable bags and start moving away from using the plastic bags. There's been a lot of information in the news and reports regarding the state's monitoring of COVID activity, county by county. Counties that fall short of the state's reopening criteria are placed on a monitoring list. If they remain on the list for more than three consecutive days, the state will step back reopening efforts. Monterey County just this week was one of the most recent counties to be required to close all indoor activities. This includes bars and restaurants again. This unfortunately is a trend that is starting to roll out statewide. As COVID nineteen cases continue to increase throughout California, the governor has already signaled that in those areas, they will start retidening a number of economic areas that have been allowed to reopen. Of course, this starts with areas of highest risk. That's why the most recent closures are targeting indoor recreation type of activities, including bars and restaurants. Again, these closures continue to wreak havoc with our local economy. But they're being made in the interest of protecting community health, both here locally and throughout the state of California. Santa Cruz County has not been included in that monitoring list so far. Although it's important to note that we are now falling short of a couple of the metrics that are required to maintain our, our attestation and our variance for additional reopening into stage three. If that continues and we start to see additional hospital stays and a spike in cases, we do run the risk of also being added to the California monitoring page. And if we were to stay on that list for three consecutive days, we could see additional closures in our area. So obviously, the increases in cases statewide and in our county are very concerning, especially the disproportionate ways impacting our community in Watsonville and particularly our Latino community. So I think it really underscores the need for all of us to continue to be vigilant, to continue to take personal accountability and be thoughtful about our own actions and behaviors that we're taking as we go about our, our daily lives and our, in our work in the community. Our city employees continue to provide a number of support efforts throughout Santa Cruz County in response to our public health response efforts. That includes now providing over a thousand hours of support to the large food bank distribution sites over the past four months. We've also been supporting the county's EDD Unemployment Assistance Office with, with city staff, providing both bilingual services and assisting with application efforts. A few meetings back, the council will remember that there was an approval of COVID-related CDVG funding of about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm pleased to report that all of that funding has now been expensed for community need. That included two hundred thousand dollars that went to the food bank, paying for over eight hundred thousand meals. The Community Action Board received eighty-five thousand for an emergency housing assistance program that assisted sixty-six families with an average of one thousand two hundred dollars each to help with housing support services during these very challenging times for many of our families. And the El Paharo CDC received a hundred thousand dollars for a microbusiness grant program. That funding went to sixty-seven businesses that applied with about one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars per business. And again, these are grants that are not required to be paid back to help our small businesses weather these challenging times. We also worked with PVUSD to help supplement and expand their efforts to connect families in our community with internet service. Obviously, the need for having access to internet in these days of distance learning for our students and, and our youth is incredibly important. So twenty-five thousand went towards a contract with Cruz IO to expand hotspots for families that provides over twelve months of connection for, for those families. It might be easy to forget that we are also in the midst of the 2020 census. With many of the, the other challenges we face, we continue to make the census a priority. Watsonville, the way with outreach efforts to keep the census top of mind for our community, and that includes some of the images you see here on the slide. We coordinated a successful census awareness campaign. Four art displays were completed in Watsonville by local artists. And the community can find these at Ramsey Park, the plaza, out front of our, our main library and on the Cabrillo campus. And I would be remiss not to take an opportunity to also add to all of the great comments that, that the council shared earlier in this meeting. And just to thank Carol Heitzig, our library director, for really thirty-five outstanding years of service to Watsonville. For those that are not familiar with our library programs, they're really second to none, and it's a compliment to Carol's leadership over the last thirty-five years. You could hear it in Carol's voice that she cares deeply about this community, and she really leaves a tremendous legacy of inclusion, innovation, and heart. And I'm confident that the team and department that she has developed over the last thirty-five years will carry on that legacy and ensure that our library continues to be not just a great, safe place for learning, but really a vibrant arts and cultural center and a place where community members can come to ask all sorts of questions, and they do, related to needs they have, may have in the community and connecting to city resources. And I, I just thank you, Carol. You'll be greatly missed, and we wish you the best of luck in this next chapter in your life. So our efforts to slow the spread of COVID nineteen and save lives really hinges on getting effective and timely information out to our community so that they can make informed decisions. And this has been accomplished in a number of ways. Most recently, we put significant time and effort into a July fourth campaign that reached over twenty thousand individuals on social media. That included three videos that were published in English, Spanish, and Mixteco. Working with our Paharo Valley Communications Group of community leaders, really putting our, putting a focus campaign and putting Fourth of July in the positive of how families and community members can celebrate safely, both protecting themselves and protecting their families. We distributed information to every person who purchased fireworks, as well as agricultural workers. This was done in partnership with many of the nonprofits that sold the Safe and Same fireworks over the Fourth of July holiday. We went out and conducted safety visits at every fireworks booth and had posters posted for volunteers so that they would understand how to distribute flyers to folks as they come to purchase Safe and Same fireworks. A thousand flyers were distributed to families dur- during food pickup at Watsonville High and EA Hall. And over nine thousand families received flyers via email through the Peach yard system that PVUSD provides. Over twenty-three agencies in the Paharo Valley and the Save Lives Santa Cruz County received and shared this information via, via their social media channels, which amplifies the reach of the campaign. The City of Hollister and the County of Monterey also used and joined the Paharo Valley Risk Mitigation Message using the same flyer videos and communication efforts in their communities. It really had a tri-county reach. And in partnership with Fantom and TNT, we placed radio ads seventeen days prior to the Fourth of July in Spanish and English radio stations with an emphasis on COVID safety and risk of social gatherings. Unfortunately, this year, we were not able to offer our longstanding Fourth of July parade. We also were not able to provide our very popular Fire in the Sky Airport Open House event. But we did rally and work closely with our community partners, including Paharo Valley Chamber of Commerce to offer a virtual celebration. And we also benefited from working with some of our groups out of Watsonville Airport to provide a flyover event that was very well received by our, by our community. We hope to return back to having our, our Fourth of July parade in person next year and bring back our Fire in the Sky event. And we very much look forward to being able to celebrate in person in 2021. Working closely with our police department and our fire department, we placed a major emphasis on enforcement and education over this Fourth of July, again, out of concern for public health. Hundreds of calls for service regarding firework violate, violations were made to our dispatch center, and a total of twenty-seven citations were issued by our officers. Our Watsonville firefighters had a very busy Fourth as well, and they ran nearly twenty-four calls in twenty-four hours, really working around the clock to ensure that the community was protected during this very busy holiday weekend. And some more positive news, our Science Workshop had the opportunity to expand their partnership with PVUSD. And they teamed up to help support all of the extended learning programs that the district's been offering. Amidst this pandemic, the team has, has expanded this program and was able to develop over eighteen hundred toolbox kits complete with instruction manuals and provided six weeks' worth of projects and programs for our local youth and families. We're also excited to announce that behind the scenes, we've been working closely on the first element of our new Ramsey Park master plan to implement a pump track. It's one of the elements that was approved as part of the new master planning effort at Ramsey. And we've had a local Santa Cruz-based organization willing to step up and make a charitable contribution to make this project happen. So behind the scenes, plans are being developed. Our hope is to be able to break ground on this project coming this fall. And the pump track will be located in what was the former skate park there in the center of Ramsey Park, and what will be an exciting project. We're also working hard to reduce the impacts of climate change. Our environmental team within Public Works was successful in achieving a Bay Area Council Climate Resiliency Challenge Grant of two hundred thousand dollars. This was a very competitive process. There were eighty-five applications in total. And of those eighty-five applications, only twelve agencies were selected to move forward, and Watsonville was one of those agencies. City of Watsonville has, for many years, been a leadership and, and environmental stewardship. And this is one more opportunity for us to be on the cutting edge as we move towards ensuring that our community is prepared for the climate changes that we're experiencing today and that we'll see down the road. This effort really targets at integrating all of our multiple planning efforts that we have underway, and that'll include the urban greening plan, the downtown specific plan, the local hazard mitigation plan, as well as the climate action plan. These are all major, long-range planning efforts that are all currently underway. And this grant will provide an opportunity for us to expand, expand that as we look at our green infrastructure implementation opportunities. We're very excited about taking this next step on the climate and resiliency front. We've also completed two major infrastructure projects in the midst of this pandemic. That includes Roach Road, which was a, a major sewer replacement project. One thousand nine hundred and twenty-five feet of main sewer line was replaced. Five manholes and over almost a million dollars in construction costs to complete this project back in April. We also were successful in completing the Airport and Freedom Trunk Sewer Replacement Project. This was over five thousand of new sewer line, and this was completed two months early back in May. We're also excited to announce that the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Segment Eighteen, this is part of the larger countywide rail trail system, will be starting construction very shortly. And with the expectation that we will be able to complete the project this November of 2020. It's a great project and includes trail access, and it will make it safer for folks to bike and walk around town. We're also moving forward with the Airport Boulevard Home Road. We're also moving forward with the Airport Boulevard Home Road Signal Installation Project. This is grant-funded with about four hundred and twenty-five thousands in grant fund. The construction was scheduled to begin in late July, and we'll provide updates as that project moves along. And then lastly, this is a topic in a program of much community interest. We're moving forward with the Neighborhood Traffic Plan for Clifford Avenue, a traffic calming project and installation. This is about a twenty thousand dollar approximate cost funded by Measure D, local transportation safety funding, and insulation is expected to begin in August later this summer. Okay, well, I know that's a longer update than usual. Happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
So at this time, it's time for councils to ask clarifying technical questions, and we'll do Aurelio, Ari, Lowell, Felipe, Paco, and Trina. So Aurelio?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions.
Okay, we'll be down to Ari.
I actually have no questions, but I thank you for the comprehensive report. I appreciate it.
Very good. Lowell?
I also want to say thank you very much to city manager. I'm always learning something. Thank you.
Okay, Felipe?
No, no questions either, but I'm really excited about some of the projects, especially the pump track.
Yeah, you've been on. Okay, Paco?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager, for the presentation. I'm actually excited for the Clifford Improvement Projects that will be happening there. Question about the illegal fireworks. I know they're tough to identify and, you know, who's doing it and who's doing it where, but are there any additional steps that we can take to combat that issue? I know it's every year, and I think more than anything, it's just that, you know, like two weeks before Fourth of July, a week before the Fourth of July, and it really does mess with people's peace of mind. And so I don't know if there are additional steps that we can take to prevent those problems.
It is a difficult challenge to tackle. I worked closely with Chief Honda this year on calling back additional officers earlier than usual because we did see an uptick two weeks leading up to the Fourth of July. We're going to be exploring other options as we head into next year's Fourth of July weekend as we see the use of illegal fireworks increasing. Many of the complaints that we receive are not around the Safe and Same. They really are around the larger, around the larger illegal fireworks. I will say that this year, we ended up issuing more citations than we have in recent history. Twenty-seven citations is a major lift. Each citation requires booking and taking those fireworks into custody, filing a police report. And so our police department was very busy monitoring that activity throughout the community. But of course, it's not enough to keep up with that high volume this year. And so we will be exploring other options to stay on top of it in the future.
All right, and then just one last question. I had to step away during your presentation. Hopefully, you didn't cover this. But I do know that Congress is speaking about a second or sort of another CARES Act type of thing. Do you know if there will be any funding there for cities, small cities like Watsonville that could really use some funding or even funding for businesses to continue to support them in these tough times, especially if we have to take a step back and some of them have to close down?
Yeah, there is some discussions that Congress is having around another stimulus, federal stimulus bill. As part of that, they're looking at, again, potential direct funding for cities and counties to help offset the economic impacts. We'll just have to monitor that discussion to see where it goes. That's been part of the discussion in the past, and those bills have failed to move forward. But now with some of the economic reopening and closing that's occurring, Congress has renewed that discussion for providing direct financial aid, and we'll keep the council apprised of that as it moves forward.
Thank you. Those are my questions, Mayor. I yield my time.
Thank you. Trina?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to ask is, what is our percentage of the census replies? The last number I had was sixty-five percent. I know our goal's one hundred. How close to the goal are we?
You know, Tamara may be able to better answer that question than I can. Tamara, you on the call?
Yes, I am here. Not a lot in progress. We're still below our seventy percent goal, so we still need to continue to raise awareness in our community. I don't have the exact percentage in front of me, but I know we're still not at seventy percent.
Okay, thank you. And are we going to get any more information when it comes to the contact tracing so that we know whether a case is like one large family or eight from individual households? Because it would be looked at differently based on the kind of contact tracing that we're seeing there. Are we going to get any more information on that?
We did have a meeting with the county epidemiologist this week. Tamara can also provide more information on that. I can tell you that the majority of the cases, based on what the epidemiologist has been able to gather through contact tracing, has been person-to-person contact by family members. It was also surprising to see that the percentage, I know that there's been concern that we have, as well as the community, has about spread within the ad worker community, but that's still showing to be a smaller percentage of the total cases we've had in Watsonville, and that was another important point we wanted to make. I don't know, Tamara, if there's anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, and in our most recent meeting, the county shows that there is still, of two hundred and fifty-one cases in Watsonville, there are still a hundred and fifteen that continue to be under investigation because the county still is working hard to build capacity and be able to trace all the cases. But like Matt said, the majority of the cases are being reported as either household acquire or community acquire, so that you become in contact with the virus in the community at large. Those are the two largest percentages.
And the criteria, is there an employment, household, and community at large? I don't know what type of criteria is so that we know how many from each bucket on that.
The county provided information regarding the professions that, in which they have determined infections to occur. The majority at this time continue to be under investigation or are simply lumped into another category, which means that there's no more than five people in the same profession that have been infected. So they cluster them under another category. And then after that, it will be farm workers and healthcare workers, the largest percentages.
Because I know in some other cases...
The county dashboard also has that information as well. And as Tamara mentioned, it's unfortunate that the largest segment, they categorize as other, which includes a number of industries. And the fact that outside of that, they're just, I think, having a hard time keeping up with all of the investigations. So they have that hundred cases that they still don't have information on.
Are we short of contact tracers?
They continue to try to add contact tracers as fast as they can have them trained. I think county health would tell you that they would ideally have a larger pool of contact tracers than they have today.
And could we also have that as a link when you give us our weekly updates? So that if we distribute that, there's a link that people can go for further information?
Yes.
Thank you. And my last question is, you mentioned Clifford on the traffic study, and we had some sensors on Stanford. Do we have any more information about the sensors on Stanford as it relates to the request for the stop sign at Stanford and Madison? Will that come back to us, or do you have information available for that?
I'll defer to Marie Oscar or Steve Pomassano on that. I know we have them both on the call.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Yes, we just picked up the information for the hose counters. It's still, we still have to download it and get it analyzed to make sure that we have all the information we need to move forward. But I will definitely keep you posted on what that is, and I should have it in the next day or two.
Okay, thank you. And I think that, other than the fireworks, which will be coming up later by the end of the meeting on the ask for this to be put back as a study, I'll hold off on any questions or comments about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trina. Matt, the only question I have is, if you remember, the governor with foundations set aside, and I don't remember the amount, but it was a large amount of money for undocumented residents. And CAB was one of the agencies selected to distribute that money. Could you find out for us how many of our Watsonville residents were able to receive that funding?
Yes, we can get an update from CAB on that and bring it forward to the council.
Very good. Okay, so moving on, this is time for public input. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the council on this particular agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. In the idea of trying to make the community of Watsonville pro-child, what does not make sense is canceling swimming lessons, since the CDC has pointed out that chlorine kills the COVID virus. On the other hand, when you allow supposedly safe and sane fireworks, which are anything but benign, to have to be in the hands of the children and then occupying our fire department and our police department with constant calls for which they have to chase out after what, if they can find them, and then determining whether it's a safe and sane firework or not is idiotic city policy and needs to be changed. Furthermore, for allowing us to cut down old growth redwoods, which are a treasure beyond measure, and we have no policy against this? This is absolutely nuts. This is supposed to be a green city. What the hell is green about chopping down old growth redwoods which trap carbon? It just makes no sense at all. Your actions need to follow your stated purposes. And right now, I'm sorry, guys, but you're not doing it. You're supposedly saying you're green, but on the other hand, your actions don't match the words. They don't, and it's really embarrassing to realize that we're the only city in this county that still allows these toxic, terrible poisons to kill our bird life, our aquatic life, burn people, cause eardrum damage, eye damage. This is so insane. It is absolutely ridiculous. Why is Watsonville so far behind on this issue? We need to do something about this. And I do have a question, and that is, when, if ever, do you think that our beautiful library will reopen? Carol's done a wonderful job leaving it in pristine condition. And again, I congratulate her. She's a great person. I'm on the Friends of the Library Board, and she will be missed. But I am very hopeful, I'm very hopeful, that at least one of our great resources in this community, since we're going to abandon the pool and apparently the senior center and the Children's Youth Center, I'm hoping at least the library will be able to reopen before Christmas. It would be nice, because as everyone has pointed out, it is an actual center for a lot of different age groups, and we very much need it in this community. And I'm hoping God that we're going to be able to reopen it sometime soon. So when are we going to reopen this, or do you know? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Steve. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item? It sounds like there's nobody else. So we will thank you, Matt, for your report, and we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there anybody in the public that would like to give input on any consent agenda item? Hearing, and then unless something is pulled, I will entertain a motion to approve. Yes?
I'd like to pull item B.
B?
And I like to, yeah, item B and item I.
B and I. Okay, we will...
Final adoption of codified partial numbers? Nope.
Okay, so we'll start then...
It's not I, it's the other one with the schedules.
What schedules are you talking about?
The breeze.
Okay, can you find which one that is?
That's what I'm doing right now. I'm trying to scroll through it. Is it on the consent, or is it on my regular agenda?
It's not on consent if you're talking about the L-N.
Yeah, it's in the consent. It's on the regular agenda.
Okay. And then just item B.
So just item B, and B would be the resolution awarding a bid to Bear Electrical Solutions. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so with that being pulled, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda. Lowell and then Ari, second vice Ari. Is there, are there any comments, questions, discussion about any of the agenda items? I do have one in terms of G. Support of Senate Bill fourteen-ten. My question is, I need clarification on the agreement for unpaid rent from the list two thousand twenty-four to two thousand thirty-four. Could somebody give me some clarification on that?
Yeah, I'll ask Suzie Merriam to chime in on that item.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
I need clarification. In the bill by Caballero, it talks about an agreement for unpaid rent from the year two thousand twenty-four to two thousand thirty-four. And I just need a clarification on those dates.
Okay, I can double-check on that.
Okay, and then get back to me.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I have a question on I.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that, item I, I know we've approved this once, but is that going to fall under a PLA since they are going to be getting some money from the city on the redevelopment part? Because it was one point eight million dollars that I think they're asking for?
That would be a Suzie question as well.
Apologize.
Gets you, Suzie's getting a double whammy here. The question was, will the project fall under a PLA with the city's contribution?
A PLA, I'm sorry. Acronyms.
Project.
Project Labor Agreement.
Yes, they do, but usually all nonprofits fall into that anyway because of their housing, where all their other housing money is coming from.
Thank you.
Okay, are any further questions on this motion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call.
Captain Gomez? Yes. Estrada?
I.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. We're now going to address item B that was pulled. And Felipe, I think you were the one that pulled it, so you want to give conversation to it? It wasn't you?
I believe it was.
I think it was Councilmember Gina Kaufman.
Okay, go ahead.
It was the other Hernandez.
It was. Was it ready?
Yeah, the reason I pulled this is that I'm concerned about this. The way that's being addressed, I feel that we should put this back out to bid since there's been so many changes to this. And I think we should be able to give an opportunity to the contractors to look at all the changes and be allowed to bid to this and see what comes out versus making an adjustment just with the lowest bidder.
And so what is your motion?
Well, I'd like this to go, I'd make a motion to make this go out to rebid versus coming to the agreement that the staff came up with. It's a tax recommendation. I'd like to see this go out to rebid.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Mayor and council, if it, if it may suit the council, I'd like to give Maria Esther an opportunity to speak to it.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. For more information, the, this particular.
We have a, we have a motion first.
There, there wasn't a second to that motion yet.
So, yeah, that's why, if there is none, then it dies, then there's, there's nothing to follow up on.
Yeah, but she could just give us information anyway.
Well, I'd rather prefer to find out if this motion is going to follow through, if not.
Well, no, there was no second to your motion.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, there was no second to your motion. But Maria Esther, if you want to give some added information, go ahead.
Sure, I, I was just going to let you know that the items that we re, retook out were line items in the contract. So we have all the other bidders in this particular project that bid on this project. If we took out those same items from the contract, they would have still Bear Electrical Solutions, would it still been the low bidder? So I just wanted to explain how the modifications came about, and it would have resulted in the same low bidder. So there was real specific items that we eliminated and would do at a later date.
Okay, so with added, added information, I'll accept a motion to adopt B. Uh, Paco, is there a second to that? Trina, is there any further discussion on that item B? Uh, Trina?
So what was, what was removed or the purpose of it being removed? Is it because we only had so much money in the budget for this?
Correct, yes. We had a limited budget on this item. We were able to, again, re, remove some items that made sense, that we could either, number one, do with city crews. The bicycle lanes, although they were removed, the green lanes, not the bicycle striping itself, but the green lanes were removed, which would allow us to do that separately on all of Beach Street from Lee Road up to, we're going to address some pavement there. So there were very specific items that were removed, and again, if they, we removed them from all the bidders, they would have still been the low bid.
Okay, any further questions? Lowell?
I just want to say, I think the community's been waiting a long time for this, and I, I'm not sure what's been added or what's been removed, but I think that, you know, if staff satisfied, we should move forward and not delay the process any longer than necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Lowell. Paco, did you want to say something?
I just had a question for Maria Esther. Maria Esther, will, will the, I imagine so, but will the, the light, the area there have crosswalks and everything needed to make sure people can get from one side to the other?
There, there's actually, on one side of the road, there is nothing to cross to. People will cross, be able to cross a lonely parkway only, but there's nothing to cross to the other side on Beach Street. It's only farmer's fields currently.
Okay, so that'll remain the same? Sorry about my dog.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further comments or questions?
Yeah, just real quick, just wanted to make sure that we understood that what's across the street is actually, I think, county property, right?
Yes.
That's why we can't do anything. Just so if any public hearing, the reason, nothing can be done on the other side of the street, it's because it's county.
It is in the county, and it is currently agricultural fields, correct?
Okay, any further comments, questions? See none, roll call, please.
Captain Gomez?
Yes.
Estrada?
I.
Gonzalez?
No.
Hernandez?
You were a mute.
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes, motion passes. Okay, we're moving on to public hearing. This is consideration of ordinance introduction to amend Chapter Two penalty provisions of Title One General Provisions of the Watsonville Municipal Court to authorize the municipal airport directors to issue citation, and with that, I guess we have Raybon.
Hello?
Yes, okay.
So, yes, what, Councilman, Mayor Garcia, excuse me, and Councilmember Raybon Williams here, Municipal Airport Director. Yeah, what you have before you in the staff report is pretty self-explanatory, and my request is pretty straightforward. Oh, we want to bring the municipal airport on the same level relative to potential, and I, I want to underscore the, the word potential, issuance of citations for violation of the City Municipal Code, which was originally, when I arrived, it had last been updated in nineteen seventy-eight. We updated it in two thousand fifteen with the help of the city attorney. And then in two thousand seventeen, after going through a number of town hall meetings with pilots, we updated the airport rules and regulations based on the municipal code, going back again to two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen, number of town hall meetings. Based on that, we were able to take the regulations and the municipal code and create the airport's first set of minimum commercial standards. So now we have what is in the airport parlance of best practices, a canon called the primary compliance documents. We actually do have written rules and regulations, municipal code, regulations, minimal standards, rates and fees. This allows us to operate the airport not only in a safe and viable and functional manner, but also it helps us to reduce liability, which is something that we are getting better at. However, as a result of this, we do still, from time to time, have tenants that they do, as a report noted, violate these, and other than cautions and admonishments, we don't get any, you don't get any compliance. So what I'm hopeful is that the following will happen. Once this is imposed, we'll be able to at least have some teeth in it, and our process will be a verbal warning. And then we will work with the tenant to inform them that they're going to be fined, and our fine structure is already listed at the back of the rules and regulations. There are twenty violation areas. Out of the twenty, over the last year, thirteen of the twenty have been violated more than once, and more than once by the same individuals. So what we're hoping to do is after we give them a warning and a monetary fine, and I'm not envisioning that it will be more than a thousand dollars over the course of a year. You know, seven or eight fines, I think people will get the message, and I'm hopeful that you will look favorably upon this request.
Okay, thank you. This is time for the council to ask clarifying and technical questions. And we'll start, it's going to be Ari, Lowell, Felipe, Paco, Trina, and Aurelio. So Ari?
Oh, it's always tough being first because I don't know enough about it, no. Ryan, thank you very much for coming on and, and, and tell me, how, how do you, how do you envision this is going to be used in the future? I mean, have you built that into this long-term plan? You said originally with nineteen seventy-eight, when you came on board the last time, and this had been revised initially or began? Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I mean, when you say used in the future, this ordinance will join the, the same ordinance that Suzie has and Dave has and Rudy has relative to ensuring that individuals on an ongoing basis from here on out are more cognizant that there are actual results for failure to follow and comply with the regulations. I'd like to stop here and say that out of two hundred and eighteen hangars, when I first started in two thousand eleven, we had a lot of problems. But in the last hangar inspection, we had like ninety-five percent compliance. It hasn't been a willingness of individuals to be blatantly against the rules and regulations. It's been more of a, it's been more of a perspective of communicating, here's why we do this, and here's why it's important for your safety, our safety, and the airport's ongoing viability. So when it comes to the future, I believe that this regulation will just help us be able to, once again, put another, you know, bolt in the in, in the, in the, in the frame of building the structure of a safe, self-sufficient, secure airport. So I think for the future, this will be a good thing, and it will continue to support those, those metrics.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is that you, you feel like progress has been made in communication, people are regularly doing it, but this is for those individuals, and there may be the exception, that just don't pay attention to those conversations.
I, that, that's, that's, I can't put any better than that, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you want to come out and sit in as airport manager for the day, I'd love it.
Okay, Lowell?
Oh, well, unfortunately, I've been to enough airport meetings and dealt with enough airport issues to know that as any school teacher would know, that you do have to have some rules and regulations and some teeth in these operations, and, and some way to be able to sanction folks that just don't want to cooperate for one reason or another. And if they don't like the rules, they can help change them a little bit, but let's gain compliance. Let's gain cooperation, and sometimes you have to have a, a little bit of a hammer to urge people to do the right thing and see things the way everybody else in the organization wants to see them. Thank you.
Okay, Felipe?
No comment.
Okay, moving on to Paco.
Thank you for your presentation, Director Williams. A question just for the ones that blatantly sort of disregard the rules. What, what kind of excuses do they, I think, do they even give you an excuse as to why they ignore some of your, your policies and protocols?
Um, yeah, yes, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think, very few people, for lack of a better term, and forgive my French, you know, flip you off or curse at you, so, so it's, it's not that. Many, many times, many times, it's, oh, I didn't know. I just shared with you that we took, and I think Alan would note this, and I know the staff, well, I spent many, many hours working on the, on those documents, and we published them. But I would tell you that out of the two hundred and eighteen hangars at the airport, I'd say maybe thirty percent of them have read them. So literally, people don't know. A lot of it's common sense, but one of the things that I'd like to stress is some of the things at the airport aren't, they aren't that, common sense isn't that common. And so what we find is, is we find that there are individuals that just don't get it, and they need to be educated. They only know what they know. And as we try to run the airport in a safer way, for lack of a better word, a more professional way, an industry standard way, they're finding the ways that the airport operated in nineteen seventy, they're not the ways they're going to operate in two thousand twenty. And so we, and we have to have a way of communicating to them, and so I'm hopeful that what this will do is it will help us communicate in that fashion.
Thank you, and then one last question, Director Williams, just for for my, my own sake, what, what would happen is, will there be an appeal process if somebody feels that they were unjustly giving a citation?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I mean, let, let me just share just a brief one for you. When I first, when I started at the airport in two thousand eleven and were reviewing the rules, I, I went to Carlos and I went to Marcella, and I said, you know, these rules, they're really not written in a way that, that favors the tenant. If you had an issue and the airport manager cited you, you had to go before an appeals board of three people, and one of those three people on the appeals board was the airport manager. And I said, that doesn't make sense. I mean, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to be on that. So I said, when we rewrite these rules, we're going to rewrite them in such a way that they absolutely can appeal any decision and go directly to the airport manager's boss, and the airport manager doesn't have to be involved. Additionally, they can appeal to the Watsonville Airport Advisory Committee, although they're an advisory committee. So the way this will work is, someone's going to get a warning. If they believe that that warning was unjust, you misunderstood me, you're out to get me. There's a process in which they can go write to Matt and say, and plead my case. There will always be a warning, there'll always be a discussion. And they'll have an opportunity to plead their case. But if they do it a second time, or I'm not going to have a much patience, because we've already, we've already had these rules in place for years. They've already been warned once, and in many cases, people have been warned before these, before you approve this. So we, and we take pictures, and we documented, and we've got records, and we've been keeping records for years, and I'm tired of keeping records and people doing the same thing. I need to be able to move to the next level.
Thank you, Director.
Okay, Trina?
Oh, Alan had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Trina, Alan had a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to kind of replow that field one more time. This administrative citation process that airport managers coming to is the same process that's used throughout the city for a variety of things. Typically, it's used for code enforcement. And, but it's used, could be used, it's used for fireworks, it's used for a variety of things. And unless it's a health and safety, imminent health and safety issue, it requires a written warning. And so if Rayvon's talked to somebody, and the person has not responded, and he sees him violating, he's required to give a written warning. It's a form that he has to fill out. Once he gives the written warning, the next time is when he writes the citation. I think the first one's a hundred dollars. And then they go up from there. When he writes the citation, they, there's a process that's not unique to the airport. It applies any kind of an administrative citation anywhere in the city. It's the same rule. It gets appealed to typically a management person above and beyond that person who wrote the citation for review. And in all these years that we've had this administrative citation process, I've never seen it go beyond that. If, if there's an error made, the error is made when it's reviewed by the superior employee, and that's the end of it. But it's a very useful process. It solves the problem that Rayvon's talking about. If you have any kind of population, whether it's what we saw earlier in the evening, housing maintenance, or whether you see it's fireworks displays, or whether you see it, somebody doing something that shouldn't be doing at the airport, this deals administratively with that one small fraction of one percent who just take it to the edge.
So it's sort of, just sort of uniforms everything. It's in a simple way. Okay, thank you.
Rayvon's not asking for anything that doesn't already, it isn't already in use by public works, by community development, by the police department, and who knows who else.
Thank you.
Okay, Trina?
So my, my question is, can we make sure that publicly we have given the, the dollar amount of these fines so that the public is aware in this conversation, in case they didn't read the material? How much are the fines going to be, and, you know, how many warnings versus when they finally get to the fines? Will the fines be escalated, just so that we know that the monetary cost would be to the, for the penalty?
This is from memory. One warning, first fine one hundred, second fine, I think it's two hundred, and the third fine, I think, is five hundred. And that's per day, at the option of the person writing the citation.
Thank you.
Okay, Aurelio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Rayvon, that was a good short report. I know a lot of the pilots call it their house. They need to realize that it's the, the house of the city of Watsonville. It's the Watsonville Airport, and it's part of the community, and they need to be part of that community and follow the, the rules that, that have been set forth. It's really important to keep order and house as it's a. So I thank you for all your work. You've been doing tremendous, tremendous work out there. Keep it up. We support you on this.
Okay, this is time now for, it's a public hearing, so it's time for our public. If there's anybody in the public that would like to address this agenda item, it is time for you to speak now. It appears that there's no one that wants to speak on this item, so I bring it back to the council. Is there any further questions, comments? Lowell?
I would just say it's a long overdue, and I'll move staff's recommendation.
Okay. Okay, if there's been a motion by Lowell and second by Aurelio, any further discussion? See none, then I'll ask for roll call.
Captain Gomez?
Yes.
Estrada?
I.
Gonzalez?
See, I mean, yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes, motion passes. Okay, we're moving on to. Did somebody want to say something?
Thank you.
Oh, okay, you're welcome. Consideration of Resolution Confirming Diagram and Assessments and Living Assessments for Fiscal Year twenty twenty twenty-one for Gonzales Street Alleyway, Bay Bree, Bay Bree, Breeze subdivision, and Mr. Mon. and Vista Montaña subdivision. Uh, we're going to begin with a staff report. Is that you Susie?
Good evening, everyone, this is.
Yeah, Ben Heistin, Assistant Director will be making the presentation.
Okay, Ben, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, this is Ben Heistin from the Parks and Community Services Department. I'm going to set up my screen right here and get the presentation going. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, yes.
So tonight I'll be presenting on the landscape lighting and maintenance assessment districts, um, abbreviated as LMads. So I'll, I'll be referring to them as LMads, uh, throughout the presentation. And, um, just to give a kind of a introduction and a quick background on the LMads before we jump into the details of the, the rate increases for the year. Um, the purpose of this meeting again is to confirm the diagrams and assessments and levy them for the fiscal year twenty, twenty 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 one. And some, for some quick background on the LMads themselves, the, in nineteen seventy two, the Landscape and Lighting Act was enacted as part of the California Streets and Highways Code. The act is a flexible tool used by local government agencies to pay for landscaping, lighting and other improvements. And it is important to note that they're not considered taxes. They are benefit assessments. And benefit assessments by definition must be calculated based off the benefit received by the parcel and not the value of the parcel. The formation of an assessment district, this is how it was conceived originally. Um, the sponsoring agency conducts a study, prepares an engineer's report and proposes the formation of a district and levies the assessments. Uh, effective, effective property owners are then notified and a, and a public hearing is held. Uh, originally, the property owners were the, the, the project developers for those, um, subdivisions. And so at the time, there was only one, one property owner. Uh, but if there are more than one, the each property owner, uh, gets to, uh, vote on the assessment through a validating procedure. Now, we've already formed the, the districts obviously, and each year we bring to council, uh, the new budget for the following fiscal year and, and formally levy the assessments. Uh, and for the past several years, we've been, um, proposing a rate increase based on the, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. And so the process that we followed for the last, um, few months is just summarized in those three council meetings that you see on, on the screen there, um, in April twenty eighth. Uh, the council gave us direction to file the engineer's report. On May twenty six, uh, council accepted the engineer's report and set the hearing date for today. The nineteen seventy two act allows for annual CPI increases. And the engineer's report is, uh, updated and seeks a rate based on the, the Consumer Price Index for the San Francisco Bay Area. And this year it's two and a half percent. Uh, property owners are notified and this year they were sent, uh, flyers in the mail. And tonight's hearing again is to formally levy the assessment. And so now we're going to give an overview of the LMads and the, the rate increases. Uh, there's three total, and the first one is Gonzales Street Alleyway LMAD, uh, shown in the highlighted area that you see before you. Uh, it is seventeen parcels and the city basically maintains a small little tree, uh, planting area right in the middle there. Uh, so there's not much in that particular LMAD. And we haven't changed the assessment for a while. It's, uh, very minimal. The total annual assessment for the entire district is six hundred dollars, which equates to about thirty five dollars and change per unit. Uh, no change in assessment for this year. The next one is Bay Breeze, the Bay Breeze LMAD. It's, uh, in the green, inside the green, uh, highlighted area that you see before you off of Aloney Parkway. And the district maintenance work began in two thousand four to two thousand five. Uh, the proposed annual assessment per dwelling, equivalent dwelling unit or EDU is shown before you. It's for this year coming up, twenty twenty one. Uh, we're proposing five hundred and forty eight dollars and forty six cents. Uh, the total, uh, increase is two and a half percent, uh, based compared to the prior year, which you can see what the rate changes and the, and the increase there in the slide in front of you. Um, so you know, it, it equals, uh, you know, a dollar and change, uh, you know, per year, uh, for each EDU. I mean, I, I'm sorry, a dollar and change per month for each EDU. And, um, just a little bit of more detail on the LMAD itself. Uh, you know, prox- approximately, uh, twenty one thousand dollars is budgeted for maintenance out of that sixty two thousand and forty one thousand, uh, approximately is placed in reserve for future repair and replacement. Um, there's street trees, detention basins, perimeter fencing, wetland mitigation plantings. Uh, there's a pedestrian path, there's a sewer pump station, there's perimeter walls. So all of, all of the, uh, the maintenance goes into kind of maintaining that and then we place into reserve a certain amount of cash each year in order to actually replace those items when they reach the end of their lifespan. Uh, and one thing to note is that in Bay Breeze, uh, it does have a, a healthy reserve, uh, over half a million dollars in there. Uh, however, this year we did some pretty significant, uh, tree replacements and sidewalk repairs. And so that, um, reserve amount will go down, uh, when I come before you next year, uh, based on that, uh, work that was done. Uh, we replaced fifty eight trees and that were damaging the sidewalks, um, from some, you know, root conflicts with the hardscape. And we also replaced, uh, quite a few areas of sidewalks and driveways throughout that neighborhood. And that picture just gives you like a before and before and after shot, uh, you know, of a representative location. So then moving on to the next LMAD Vista Montaña. Uh, this is over by An Soto Elementary and Farnish Park. Uh, the district is comprised of a hundred and seventy three single family units, eighty townhouses, uh, and a hundred and thirty five apartments. Again, we began work in this district in two thousand four to two thousand five. The increase in assessment is two and a half percent, uh, kind of shown before you in the different categories. So for twenty twenty one, for single family homes, five hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents. For townhomes, four hundred and twelve dollars and seven cents. For apartments, a hundred and forty two dollars and ten cents. Uh, each reflects two and a half percent increase over the last fiscal year. Um, similarly, it's, the budget is broken down into maintenance and replacement reserve. So there's, you know, about ninety six thousand dollars budgeted for maintenance and the goal is to, uh, dump forty five thousand dollars into the reserve uh, each year to build up that reserve. The Vista Montaña LMAD in particular has, uh, not the best reserve balance. Uh, there was some work done, uh, in two thousand seven, two thousand eight at the request of the, the homeowners to add additional landscaping, uh, which depleted the reserve amount. And we've also done, um, kind of additional maintenance based on the, the requests that we get from residents. Just trying hard to have a good customer service ethic and, uh, do what is asked of us. Uh, but there's always a balance and a challenge we face, um, with this, this LMAD in particular to not, not honor all of the requests that we receive because we don't want to go over, um, on, on our budget just because the reserve is somewhat depleted and we would like to see that, uh, increase year after year. So we get to a spot where if there's a, uh, you know, a big ticket item, we have to replace that we can do that. Uh, so we have been incrementally, uh, uh, increasing it. If, if you've been around for a few years, you've probably remember that it was, in the past, it, it was, um, there's hardly anything in there. Uh, but you know, we really tried hard to pinch pennies where we can and so we can increase that. So it's gone up a little bit, uh, per year as you can see. And this, uh, year at the end of, um, the fiscal year, we're expecting the reserve to be about ninety thousand dollars. And we're doing that, you know, again to, you know, to increase that reserve. And we're only performing budgeted maintenance work. We're trying to conserve irrigation water and other operational expenses uh, so we can build that reserve back up. Um, and you know, each, each fiscal year, it's really important that we increase, uh, the assessment by the CPI uh, because that keeps up with the cost of inflation and allows us to basically keep on doing what we're doing. It doesn't allow us to do anything extra because it's only, uh, you know, two and a half percent, which barely, uh, keeps up with the cost of inflation and benefits and supplies and other operation, operational costs. Uh, but that's the minimum we try to do each year. Um, in the future, the, since the original engineer's reports are around fourteen years old, uh, we do recognize there's a need to redo those reports and, uh, hire a consultant to reevaluate the costs. And any, any increase above and beyond the CPI, uh, increase would require, um, approval from the, the property owners in the form of a validating procedure. Uh, so that, that's a process we intend to conduct, uh, in the future. Um, especially because Vista Montaña particularly, you know, needs, needs, uh, more maintenance, uh, resources to adequately, you know, keep up with everything out there. So that's just example of what's, what's coming in the next, uh, year or so with, with the LMads. Uh, in summary, uh, you know, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution and I'll, uh, take any questions at this time.
Okay, so this is the time, uh, for council clarifying and technical questions. And we will, uh, begin with Lowell, Felipe, Paco, Trina, Aurelio and Ari. So Lowell.
Well, we have heard from a number of neighbors in the LMads and maybe they don't understand the history of the LMads or have, uh, recently bought into the, uh, development, the planned development. And so that they may not, uh, know that this has been in place for quite a while and that things do wear out and things do need to be replaced and, uh, landscape grows up and needs to be trimmed. Anybody that's priced a tree trimming or a landscaper recently knows that it's, uh, that an increase of a dollar a month is probably not a great big deal.
Okay, thank you Lowell. Uh, I don't see Felipe. Felipe, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, you know, I, I do have a quick question about, about Bay Breeze or the one that covers Aloney. Um, I mean, maybe even the other ones. I know there's, there's parks around there and there's a lot of, uh, dog ownership. Do, do these, uh, fees cover stuff like the, uh, the, uh, the, you know, the dog dispenser, dog dispensers that are around the, that neighborhood?
Uh, Councilmember Hernandez, no, they do not. The, there's a trail that goes around, uh, Bay Breeze, uh, but that's not, uh, paid for by the, uh, the property owners in the LMAD. That comes out of the general fund most likely.
Okay, uh, moving on to Paco.
Thank you Mayor. Uh, Ben, thank you for your presentation. Um, I too have heard from constituents that, you know, especially in the pandemic year, uh, even two and a half percent may be a lot for some. But, um, you, you know, I, I have explained to them that if, you know, we, we vote know on this that, you know, the, the level of service may decrease a little bit, um, and some have even brought up the idea of doing work themselves. Is there work around the area there that cannot be done by, by residents?
Councilmember Estrada, I think it's a good question. Uh, you know, that would be something that we would definitely, you know, volunteerism is something we encourage. Uh, you know, being that it's a public right of way area, uh, we'd be concerned about safety and just wanting people to, uh, know what the standards are for that particular area. But if they want to go pull weeds or, uh, you know, prune something, that would be, that would be fantastic. We would work with them on, on doing that. Um, it just kind of depends on, on the nature of the work, but it's something we're, we're definitely open to as long as we can kind of be in the loop and coordinate that effort.
All right, I do, I do thank you for that Ben, just because, you know, because they asked me, uh, they told me their concerns. Uh, and if I did vote to, I agree that you do need the, the, uh, to keep up with the inflation, um, that they would do their part as well to help keep the, the area clean.
Okay, uh, moving on to Trina.
Uh, thank you Mayor. Yes, there's some, some clarifying questions that I think will be very helpful for the public to understand a bit better. Um, what is the process that the property owners have to discuss the priorities that we're going to be putting on the bucket list for the maintenance?
Okay, Councilmember Gomez, we, we established the maintenance budget based on the engineer's report. And there's a kind of a line item detail within that report, uh, that I can share. And we have a, you know, our own detailed, uh, budget that I, I can definitely share if, if council is interested.
So you're saying engineer's report. How is this, uh, related to the owner's input for the engineer's report and the material that is being done in the maintenance?
Me, um, I got Maria Esther Rodriguez on the call who, who's, who updates the engineer's report. And I think she could probably answer that question better than I.
Good afternoon. I'm back, Maria Esther Rodriguez here. The, the engine, the engineer's report identifies, do you, should we focus on Bay Breeze or Vista Montaña or?
Uh, let's take Vista Montaña because I know that that was the one that had the increase since I've been on council. So I, it's just come up that we were actually doing a lot more of what the ask was and what we had the budget to do. So there was modification a few years ago about that one and, and that would be a good one for us to use as the example.
Correct. So in the Vista Montaña one, it's, it's quite a bit larger than the Bay Breeze one because it only includes landscaping and lighting, like you, it's pretty obvious in the name of itself. But there's also an agricultural, uh, buffer and swale that needs included. There's frontage along, uh, East Lake Avenue that doesn't, could seem a little bit far away from the, the actual homes. There's another pump station there. So there's a number of things that are included in, in the breakdown of how the funds are used. And it's really identified, for example, if there's X number of trees and shrubs and different things that are put in. And there's an, uh, because of the number of trees and different types of landscaping pieces, there's so much money identified for landscaping. There's also so much money identified for lighting. So these are just like regular maintenance items that went into the cost when it was originally established. Now, I didn't work on the original one, but that's why I'm just speaking in generalities. But it was based on a tree, how much work goes into each tree to, to prune it, to maintain it during the year. And that's kind of how those numbers came up. And at the time, as was mentioned, it was done, it was formed and the original report was put together when it was essentially one property owner. And so that's the input that went into that original report and that's, that's the same report that keeps resurrecting and updating. The only update is really just the cost. We haven't shifted around how funds are used.
Okay, now, uh, I, I don't know if it's, is it disclosed now, but can we have this part of the JCP so that upon every sale, the disclosures in there in terms of the environmental and the cost for purchasing that unit and the, and the location? Um, and again, JCP is probably an acronym for what the agents may buy as a report for the, the location there. Do you know if that's one of the elements when they identify that address is a component for disclosures to the, the property owners when they do the, the sale?
I would assume that yes, indeed, if there's an assessment levied against this property, it needs to be included and disclosed to the property owner. I, I don't know, yeah.
Um, the, the other thing is, um, can you discuss the difference between what the fee is that's being collected and we're voting on now versus if it were to be flipped over and it became an HOA item for the, the community members in that particular subdivision? Have we discussed that or shown that or, um, shared that with the, the property owners in terms of how this could change or be voted out or that they take on this kind of a maintenance?
I don't believe that discussion has been had with the property owners. I know it has been brought up initially, uh, inside if, because of property owners asking, this is a lot of money. Inside if because of property owners asking, this is a lot of money. Where does our money go, etc. But I think it is something indeed, as you mentioned, if an LMAD gets voted out, it doesn't just disappear, it would have to be recovered by an HOA. So the property owners would have to form an HOA and then the city would no longer have any maintenance for the things that we've been doing for landscaping and lighting. It would be taken on by the HOA. And any funds that we had collected to date that we still had would be turned over to that HOA. But as Ben points out, what folks want to be maintained is probably at a higher level than what the funding is providing. So that's important to note.
And I have just, I have a couple more for you so that I don't take too much more of your time. We have a lateral sewer ordinance, which is if the property's been twenty five years, it's required by the landowner to do this this inspection. And then we have the trees and everything that's going on with, you know, this particular LMAD for these particular districts. When do the two intersect that the the homeowner is being charged the the inspection fee to discover that the LMAD and the cost for maintenance of these trees may be the result of damages? How do we intersect when we're telling in ordinance versus the LMADs if that were to occur with these inspections?
I think in the case of street trees. Sorry, I'm getting some feedback. In the case of street trees, we have seen that the occasionally when it has been a tree that's planted nearby, the roots find itself looking for water and they end up in a sewer lateral. So that that could happen. In in that specific case, if it's a we'd we'd have to look at it specifically. I but I think if there's a street tree that's found its way there, a lot of times you just cut the roots and it should be fine. If it's totally damaged and it has to be replaced or repaired, we'd look at each case individually. But if it it comes to something that it looks like it's totally destroyed the lateral, then I think if it was something that the city required to put in, that I think it could go back to, in this particular case, being charged to the LMAD since it it we are responsible for the maintenance of the trees. And those were a required installation.
Okay, because this has come up in terms of the sewer lateral with all of the trees and everything that that's issued. This particular flyer that was given to property owners, I don't know that it was part of our council packet. But what was the material that was put into this flyer to the property owners when the mailing went out?
I can speak to that. It was basically a summary of the presentation that you saw tonight, just in terms of background on the LMAD. Information about the process in general, a notification about the hearing date, invitation for the property owners to come to the hearing and provide input and to reach out to staff if they do have questions. There were links provided to access the engineer's report if they so wish to do so. It had information on the rate increase and the comparison of the rate to the to the prior year. And we did receive, you know, a handful of of inquiries that, you know, just kind of technical inquiries from from residents. You know, overall appreciated the the communication, which we haven't, normally we haven't done. We kind of went a little bit above and beyond and wanted to make sure that people really knew about the rate increases because in the past we've gotten feedback where, you know, people don't know about the hearing. So that's why we we sent out the letters this year.
Well, well, that's good. And you are getting feedback. And this is the fourth fourth time I think we've seen this on the agenda. So thank you for your time and due diligence and the the questions here. And right now, that's that's all I've got for you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, most, a lot of them asked all the questions that I I wanted to ask already, Trina. So but you know, one thing that I did, we did, I did receive a lot of communications from Monta Vista. And and they seem to be disgruntled. They don't, they're not happy with the service of the city of Watsonville. Trees aren't pruned, landscape isn't taken care of. And so you you think about this and and their disgruntledness. And then, of course, you know, there's not enough public output information for them that we don't give them enough notice. If the city took the stance of saying, okay, for month, let's let them create their own HOA. Let them look at what the cost is going to be if they take it under their HOA. Is it something that we could do and and allow them to do so they could actually see it before we make a a motion on their resolution? And also, I mean, driving down East Lake Avenue, I think we need to do a better job on pruning trees because just those trees off of East Lake Avenue look just horrible. They they look like they haven't been attended in in years. And then when they do, they just kind of basically get all chopped down. And then they they get regrown and, you know, and it takes a while for anybody to go out there and and maintain that area. So I can come in agreement with some of those property owners that, you know. Then it's kind of shabby. And I think we need to do a better job at what we're doing there if we're going to be 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 responsible for that. So I guess what I'm trying to say is if if we can wash our hands from this and it's if it's possible that they take it on, that'd be less expense for the city to maintain pump stations, spiral swells and and a lot of landscaping area. So those are my comments. And if you can answer my question of can we allow the the homeowners to go ahead and start a petition or anything to create a HOA for that region? For that.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I appreciate the the comment. There is definitely a process to dissolve the LMAD. And, you know, perhaps Maria Esther has a little bit of of information on just overall what that process looks like. I can't, you know, speak to that in detail, but there certainly is a path forward on that. You know, again, I would I would just comment too that, you know, the the expectations of what the maintenance looks like kind of differs from our our capacities. And and frankly, the the true intent of that landscaping area Vista Montaña in the first place, which was to be a natural agricultural buffer and to be somewhat natural and wild looking, not unkempt, but definitely less manicured than than what we, you know, what a lot of property owners expect. And I think that's that's been the area of of contention is that property owners want, you know, really manicured look. But when that when that landscaping was designed, it wasn't designed to be, you know, super well manicured and with with everything really low because it it there's supposed to be an agricultural buffer between the homes and the adjacent farmland. But certainly to your point, you know, we we do fall behind on on maintenance and we do our best. Again, that's why we want to, at the very minimum, in redo the the cost evaluations. Because, you know, you know, we we can barely keep up and we need to get a new assessment that that can kind of identify exactly what the costs are. But bear in mind, if whether whether or not we facilitate that process or whether or not the homeowners, you know, do it themselves, they'll they'll find a that the cost will go up. Because simply because of to contract that amount of landscaping out, it's going to be, you know, extraordinarily expensive. We've we've tried to to get landscape quotes on just small little areas like in front of the homes. And even that is, you know, pretty astronomical and we just can't afford to do it. We've we have have not gotten a quote on just the landscape maintenance for the entire LMAD. But keep in mind too that the assessments go for lighting, maintenance, they go for, you know, replacement of those assets. So there's more than than just the landscape maintenance that they're paying for. You know, so I mean, we we would definitely, we need to explore costs one way or another. But I want to just kind of be frank that property owners may be in for a rude awakening on what the the services would would cost to contract out. I don't know if Maria Esther, you have any detail on the process that that the residents can start to actually form an HOA?
I, you covered a lot of the information really well, but you're you're right, as I as mentioned previously, for the property owners to take it over, they would have to form an HOA. And in the city here, we definitely a democracy. So we listen to what the folks there want. So if it's the if it's the folks at Vista Montaña, they're going to want to do an HOA, it would indeed be started by a petition from them and versus us trying to force out of it. That's how typically it comes from. It comes from their voices and we could give them their information. And I think Ben said it very well, saying that it would be kind of a rude awakening because although they may not see that what they're spending and how it's being spent and it's being spent doing all of this maintenance in today's dollars and probably moving forward, it is probably going to cost a lot more to maintain what's already being maintained. And then going back to dealing with the property owners there years back, as Ben also mentioned, the property owners there really wanted to see more landscaping. And that's when, I think it was two two thousand seven, when the the meeting was held with the property owners there and there was a lot more landscaping put in bushes and trees, etc., which even caused more maintenance now. So if it a little bit more unkempt, it's because decisions made also to put in a lot more landscaping and it's growing a lot wilder, I guess. And it looks a little bit unkempt, but definitely a process. If the property owners want to start a petition, they can do that. And again, we can provide information on how that would go. We haven't done that before, so I'd have to brush up myself on the exact way. But if it's anything like the formation of a district, it would be through the petition process, back to council for decisions to move forward on dissolving it and then making sure that they have a homeowners association formed to be able to take on the responsibilities of doing that because they will be responsible for doing the maintenance if the city is no longer going to be responsible at their request.
It appears that Attorney Allen wants to say some words. You're a mute.
Thank you twice for the muting and for recognizing me. A couple of things. I recall what Maria Esther recalls about two thousand seven. There was concern about how it was being maintained, what it was being maintained, whether there were enough shrubs out there. And I wasn't part of the meetings, but the word I got is that staff met with the members of the HOA. And they and it and there is an HOA, there's one that exists. I'm I'm sure of it. It may not be involved in the actual hiring a property manager to maintain the maintenance, but it exists for other purposes. There's some common area, I think. So staff met with them and there were some adjustments made. At that time, the word I got back is that they did not want to hire a property manager to manage the maintenance of the property because it was more expensive than having the city do it. And they didn't expect to get any more or any better result than having the city do it. And every five years or so, as we go through these annual LMAD reviews, this comes up. And it certainly, as Maria Esther and Ben have said, it's a democracy. They certainly can do that. But the CCNR is saying they must have either an LMAD or a HOA maintaining those particular parcels. So it's worked well pretty much for, gosh, what is it, fifteen years out there? And third, two thousand seven, thirteen years. And but it can change and staff can meet with him.
Okay, thank you. Ari? You have nothing? Okay, go ahead.
No, no, I do have something, but thank you. No, I was wrestling with my mic button there. First, I want to say thank you very much for all the maintenance you do out there. My district I live, I drive that daily, coming home, going to school, going anywhere I drive out there. And it's a much bigger maintenance area than most people think. You know, we're not just talking about Vista Montaña with just the houses. We're talking about, as you said, everything around that whole thoroughfare. And I understand that, and I I don't think it's a great deal for the city either, you know, I understand. And this is all leading up to my questions, Rebecca. That 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 when the, and you weren't here and I wasn't here, you know. And I was here, but I wasn't in on council. When the contractor, as the sole owner, made this deal with the city and I'm looking around and Lowell might have been here, but I don't think anybody else was during that time. There you go, Lowell. And and to get that frontage property developed. And it was a big deal. I know I lived through that. It was a big deal finally. But the problem is, and I I want you to know, and Angel says he's the man. He's out there all the time and he's been working forever. So she says hi. I just want you to know something that that people out there really appreciate it. They never talked badly about our staff and our workers. They didn't say they were lazy and they didn't do it. You might have gotten a couple, one or two, but I went out there a couple of times over the past few weeks and on the Fourth of July, I was out there speaking to the families who were celebrating. And and they spoke extremely positively about staff and about the work, but they just felt it was overwhelming. And and now if they're listening, they hear a little bit more why, right? That we have, and in addition, we had COVID, we had shelter in place orders. We had things that stopped us from being able to deploy all the people. I don't see it as a weeding issue out there. I don't. I see it as, and you know, it might have been about the plants. Could you speak about the plants a little bit that you said were planted or repanted in two thousand seven? And the changes that were made in there at that time?
Sure. Councilmember Parker, thank you for your question. That was before my time as well, but I I have been involved in the the discussion. And from my understanding, there was, you know, a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars spent on on new landscaping. It was primarily done on the end caps of the the buffer area. So when you drive by on Bridge Street, there's each end of a block of houses has a kind of a greenbelt. And on the corners there, particularly that was spruced up. And so you see all this New Zealand flax and some, you know, rock rose and some other plantings. Primarily the focus, I believe, with that effort was to green that up and make it more lush. It could have been that it was more sparsely planted in the beginning and things just needed more time to fill out. That's that's usually what needs to happen. Plants need several years to establish and and fill out and grow. But but I I know that there was a a real request from the residents in a complaint that it was too too sparse. And so that work was done. You know, that's that's a kind of the all the details I have on on that particular job that that depleted the reserves. You know, in addition to that, there's there's multiple, there's there's street trees and an area of landscaping in front of the homes that's primarily drought tolerant plants that was put in as part of a landscape architect design. And we will, when those die, when those plants die or the trees die, we'll 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 replace them. We have run into issues where kind of the original location for a tree may not have been in the best spot in proximity to like a, you know, hardscape. And and so there's been some modifications where though there was originally a tree there, we'll say, you know, in the situation, let's let's put in a shrub because that's probably not the best spot for it. Try to stick with the original design. We, there there have been homeowners that have kind of just planted things on their own. Like I see, I see fruit trees and some of those little planter scripts. We 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 don't, you know, roll it with an iron fist. If if homeowners want to do that, we definitely discourage it and would rather you request replacements through us. But, you know, there have been plants that just show up. And at that point, we ask that the homeowners just kind of maintain those sort of noncompliant plantings. Because they, you know, if there's a fruit tree in in the park strip, it requires more maintenance. And in all those situations, it's all case by case that, you know, usually the people that are doing that are really into gardening and and want to are fine with maintaining their little area. There is a a huge agricultural buffer near the Bridge Street canal across across Bridge Street with more plantings. And, and the canal itself, uh, needs to be mowed down, uh, regularly. And then there's a, a row of street trees along East Lake that, that also is, is maintained by us. And since those are planted under, underneath power lines, in the, in the recent years, uh, Comcast or one of the utility contractors. Has, um, you know, cleared the, the trees from their, their line, so that's actually, uh, you know, work that we've, we've done one time. But I, you know, I've noticed that the utility companies are taking that on to keep those trees away from the line. That's why, kind of why you see the, the butchered appearance of those unfortunately. Uh, just to give you. The plant material.
And, and I do appreciate, um, I, I do appreciate all that. And I think it is a bigger, it's a bigger problem than any of the homeowners understand at this point. Because I think they see it as very much in front of their home, like you talked about, in front of that hardscape. Um, and, and they see it when they're driving around, but they don't see the impact on East Lake Avenue or the pump station. They don't perceive that, they see that as part of the city. So I understand it's a bigger obligation certainly than they're aware of and a- as, uh, uh, Councilwoman Kaufman Gomez says, there's a lot of information. I'm sure that a lot of the homeowners do not have and did not have. And I'm, I'd like to find out, uh, by the agents who sold them their homes, whether they do. But, you know, I still feel like at this point to ask them to, well, okay, so let me ask, uh, uh. Would there be, uh? Let's go with the hardscapes inside in front of their homes, what do we call those, those little inserts in front of the home? That you said were.
Planter strips or, or park strips, yeah.
Okay, park strips in front of their homes, they do make a major impact on what's looking, I'm not worried about weeds, I wasn't worried, I don't think anybody else is. When you drive that, as I drive it every day, we asked you not to use poison in our area, we understand there's repercussions on that. That that's, that that will, you know, slowly have to, to change over time. Um, but in all honesty, you know, those little sections in front of their homes, um, uh. Has anybody ever thought of just pulling out all that stuff? I mean, it, it, it would save money for water, it just looks horrible. And as you mentioned, there's a whole bunch of areas in there, Ben, that, that have trees growing roots into the sidewalk, the sidewalk is starting to buckle. And, and some of those homeowners were told that, that that was their responsibility to deal with. And I have no idea who informed them of that, but you know, is it their responsibility to deal with? If the sidewalk through one of those trees that the LMAD is, uh, maintenance by, you know. Wrecked one of the sidewalks, does the homeowner then have to take care of that?
Council, I'd like to chime in, I'll act, I'll actually defer that question to our city attorney or to Tomata Vida's, our risk manager. Cause it's, uh, through several layers.
Well, that's good, it's not just for me, it's across the city, right? Yeah.
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 So again, uh, would you restate the question?
The question was, the question was, is it the responsibility of the homeowner to repair the sidewalk outside of their home? If, uh, if damage is incurred, uh, you know, uh, in this, in this instance, it's by an LMAD, it was, which is maintained by the city. And it's a root system that's basically been growing into it and lifting it. So you can answer it that way and then, you know, if it's just damage that happens over time.
Okay, well, it's a complicated question for a couple of reasons, one is, it depends on who owns the sidewalk, uh, first of all. So I'm assuming for this discussion that the sidewalk is owned by the property owner. And I'm assuming that the sidewalk is, uh, an obligation of the LMAD to maintain. And if that is true.
I don't know.
Well, this, this.
That's why I'm asking it, I don't know if it's a part of the LMAD maintenance or not, yeah.
So I, I, I am not as familiar with the details of this LMAD as perhaps Ben is. Uh, so I'm, uh, but I, I, if, if this LMAD is not, does not maintain the sidewalk. Then the sidewalk obligation is the obligation of the property owner on whose property the sidewalk exists. Uh, if the sidewalk is on public property, then it's typically the responsibility of the city.
Okay, but if the damage that is incurred by, by the sidewalk, who, which may be owned by the property is, uh, maintenance by an LMAD. And they did not maintenance it correctly by pulling out the tree or chopping, I don't know how it would be, you know, mitigated, but some fashion, you know, uh. And that damage occurred because of that, then whose responsibility would that be?
Okay, well, the city is not responsible for dangerous, um, conditions of public property unless it has notice of the dangerous condition. So the, so the way they might, the city might be responsible is if the city somehow saw a damaged sidewalk. City maintenance people saw a damaged sidewalk caused by the, um, shrubs or whatever that was supposed to be maintained and didn't do anything about it. There is a, there is a risk there. The lawsuit would probably again be against the property owner who would tender it to their homeowner's insurance carrier. And then the city would cover it under risk management.
Good.
I think that's how it's answered.
If, if I may also chime in here, this is Maria Esther Rodriguez.
I'm Maria Anthony.
Hi, the, there is also, we do run the sidewalk repair program. Because the sidewalk adjacent to your home, in front of your home, even though it's within public right of way. Is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. So for example, if the sidewalk in front of your home is in disrepair, it's up to you as the property owner. To make sure that that sidewalk is repaired and the cost is on you. In the case of an LMAD, in this particular case, since it is, uh, sidewalk. Trees required by the LMAD and if those trees were required to be put in. And those trees are causing the sidewalk to be in disrepair, then the LMAD could cover those sidewalks. And I think that was the case in Bay Breeze. Ben mentioned some work being done recently at Bay Breeze in replacement of trees and sidewalks. That's an example of how this would be covered by that LMAD. Because we required the trees and it is a cost being covered by that LMAD.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's really educational, I appreciate that, I'm sure, I hope everybody's listening to that across. And, and so that's why people are very protective of the sidewalk in front of their homes. And should be because the kids are out there pounding on stuff or T Willikers, anybody, you, you, you're gonna, any damage that takes place. Then you're responsible for it unless you can find a third party. So, um, I, I've heard a lot about this, um, uh, Ben. Uh, what about, um, this, what about, uh, you mentioned participation from the public? Uh, I, I, I'm thinking that in the end, this is gonna need education. And they're gonna have to see defunding and creating an HOA is not the way they're gonna wanna go. Um, it, increasing this cost of their LMAD is gonna be so much less. But it's also gonna really need an understanding of what happened so that this doesn't happen in two thousand seven and then in two thousand twenty. You know, we make changes, we have to really build something in so all the property owners know. And, and what, uh, Trina Kaufman Gomez says about, I'd love to know if the real estate agents who sell those homes, if that's. Let, you know, whether it's Bay Breeze or whether it's Vista Montaña, you know, whether they're fully aware of the scope of those LMAD. And how much the city has been, um, uh, subsidizing them basically, cause that's how it's worked, right? Um, I mean, they would, I, I think, uh, in my discussions with many of them, I think they'd be shocked to know that those walls, the retaining walls. And all that big area outside along the, the drive-through of the franniche property. And I'm sorry, I'm old school, cause I was there, but you know, when it was all, uh, you know, orchards and land, uh, that that's maintained by their LMAD. And they didn't, I, I'm sure they don't know it, the majority of people have no idea, they're really just looking at, in front of their homes. And, and seeing what they see and the trees that are being blocked, you know, the lights are kind of all around them. So there's a twenty-four hour light on because it's built into the tree now. So there's lots of things and I understand that in the last three months where we've had a lot of happy rain and sunshine, growth happens dramatically. Um, and, and we just haven't had the resources because of COVID and S I P to, to really, you know, get everything, uh, done to the level that they want. But what would you say about, um, having a meeting with these folks? That, is that something, having a meeting, presenting them options? And, um, and looking towards, uh, having their participation to get out there if they wanna change the front of their, their houses in those park areas. To get out there and pull everything up and have you guys just drive by, throw it in the bag, take it to the dump and then, you know, help with the next step. So it becomes even less of a burden for the city and certainly a financial drain for them. How would that go, Ben? What do you think?
Councilmember Parker, yeah, I mean, that's a great, that's great feedback, um, we, we'd definitely be open to that idea. I think that thinking long-term, we, we really need to look at the, the, the cost for the entire LMAD. And create that conversation, uh, with kind of a reevaluation of those costs. Because I mean, you know, there's, there's, if, if we're getting together, we might as well, um, you know, make it productive and, and bring up that issue. Which is kind of the looming issue that we're, uh, that causes us to fall behind and causes us not to have, um, you know, the, the, the resources to maintain it. And, and if in that conversation, there, there, you know, there, there comes a, some kind of interest or understanding or agreement. For the homeowners to actually help us maintain it, we can definitely consider that through our, you know, we have an adoptive parks program and, um. You know, we have volunteer programs, it certainly wouldn't be no different fundamentally for the LMAD as long as we can, uh, you know, structure that, uh, right? So, you know, the city doesn't incur some kind of liability, uh, or that there's not some, uh, maintenance issue with. Like a group of homeowners going rogue and doing whatever they want, so, so there's.
Honestly, that's how, that's how they are now because of, because it looks terrible in some places there in front of their homes. So they've just ripped out whatever and they put in their own plants and they maintain it. And those are few and far between, but literally those are, that's what they're doing. So it would be nice, it would be nice to get the whole, they, they don't see that, that that money is paying for that whole area, that drive-through. All those plants, the walls, they certainly don't see East Lake Avenue and that pump station. So, uh, you know, education is really important for this because, you know, we have a, we're, we have a fiduciary, uh, responsibility. It's a big word for me that I've learned as I've become a city council member, you know, that, that we take money for something. And they have expectations that, that that will be properly looked after and the work will be done. And their scope is walking out their front door, that's all. And they look out their front door and they see this mess and it's a small little mess, you know, the, the strip out in front of the sidewalk, but it's their mess every day. And they, I have to say, big applause to Vista Montaña, uh, they really do a beautiful job in maintaining their own front yard. And they all, uh, different styles, but they keep it clean and they keep it, uh, you know, just looks great. Personalities along the way, but they really, uh, they care about their community. So I, I'm really happy to hear that, that you care about it too and you're willing to put that. And I don't think we should move forward with this until we do that, I think there is sticker shock, uh, gonna be involved in this. But I think that's part of the issue, you know, there needs to be, um. Equal opportunity for everybody to be involved and, and to have that conversation and to come to the understanding and not just receive that. That maybe well-informed form letter, so, uh, I thank you, Ben, and I thank everybody in Parks. And, uh, and, and all the crews that you have that go out because we, we do appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing. Don't, don't ever doubt that, okay?
All right. Okay, thank you, Ari, this is a public hearing. And so at this, uh, time, I invite anybody in the public that would like to address the council on this, uh, item, please come forward. It doesn't seem like anybody wants to address the council, so I bring it back to the council and I will entertain a motion to approve staff recommendation. Anybody want to make a motion? Okay, Ari.
Um, I'm gonna pull this up so I have language. Uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, to, uh. Well, I don't wanna make the motion that, that we have on here, so I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, uh, put off, uh, collecting, uh, any fees for LMAD. Uh, um, uh, for one year until we can look into, uh, meetings with Bay Breeze. And we can look into meetings with Vista Montaña, not, not the whole thing, just any increase. Aurelio, I saw the look on your face, thank you, so any increase in the LMAD, that the two and a half percent. And, um. That's where I'm gonna go.
So we have.
Wait for a second.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second to that motion?
If I can add something.
Trina, are you seconding that motion, Trina?
I will, I will second the motion for discussion.
Okay.
Be, um, so anyway, when you're ready.
Moved and seconded and so, uh, any discussion on this motion? Now, Trina and then Lowell.
Um, yes, this discussion is, this would be something that I would want to continue until such time. That we give them their allowance to, to do what they wanna reconvene and bring it to us. I think that this is something that, um, if they wanna make the change, they need to come before us instead of us sitting here waiting for them to come to us. Uh, or, or to make the change, because we're not hearing from them right now. Um, and, and that's important, I know that we've had some emails. And if this is significant enough, I would think that they would also listen to what was presented here. And to continue to address the concerns. So that is where I'm a little cautious about not moving on something that we're already subsidizing. So we're in the hole even if the two and a half percent is, is implemented. And again, if they have that interest or desire, we need to see about them coming forward. Um, and, you know, placing a formal request, um, finding out that staff has been requested for this information of those, um, the LMADs that are out there. Cause each of them are different, so not all of them are asking the same thing or the same request. Because again, some of them are just the lighting and some of them do have a lot more of the, um, environmental impact of, of resources that we're providing.
Okay, Lowell then Aurelio.
Well, I would advise a no vote on this motion because I think they've worked very hard on trying to craft it. They've reached out to the residents, everybody's received a letter or at least the, uh, the, the tenants have, uh, received a, a letter. And I think we've had enough discussion on it to know that we don't wanna hold up the process anymore. Let's just vote this down and move forward with a, with staff recommendation.
Okay, Aurelio, and then, uh, Paco.
Yeah, um, I don't, yeah, I don't agree with the motion, uh, in the sense that I don't agree we should, we should put them all together. I think, uh, the Gonzales Street, uh, one, uh, could stand on its own and Bay Breeze could stand on its own, I think we can pull those. And I think the Vista Montaña one is the one that we could probably try to delay and, uh, see what can we work out. Um, keep the fee to one year and then, um, or at least six months. And then have the, the public come out and get together and give them their opportunity if they wanna create a petition, if you do the petition. Uh, so they can see all their alternatives and then, uh, move forward from that, but I think we should move forward with the first two.
Okay, uh, Matt and then, uh, Paco.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just a point of clarification in terms of process, that if the council were to choose to not increase the fee. We're still required to submit the reassessment to the county by August tenth, and so we would still need to do so. We'd be moving forward with all three, and it sounds like with the exception, if it was the council's will to not increase the assessment for Vista Montaña. We could still move forward with, with the, with the assessment.
Okay, Paco.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I, I too was kinda hoping for an opportunity, uh, maybe not a, a year, but if we could just maybe table this for, until the next meeting. Because I would, uh, Ben, you, the presentation was remarkable, it was very informative. And, and this is information that I would like to go back to my constituents, just to explain everything to them, you know, and to let them know that, you know, uh, a no vote would mean this. And let them know that, you know, uh, a no vote would mean this and it would, you know, services would be at this level. And this is everything that Parks does, Parks and Services does, because it is quite a lot that you do. And I don't think they really comprehend, um, eh, like how extensive the work you do around there is. And I really want them to be sure of, of what everything entails, uh, if, if they don't want to move with the, the, the increase in the fee. So, uh, maybe a year is, is a bit much. But if, you know, you were, if the council were to give me an opportunity just to, to the next meeting, I know I can have a, a positive answer from my constituents.
Okay, uh, uh, Trina?
The concern I think is that when, uh, this goes to the county, they, they prepare the, the property tax bills that get mailed out. And I think that that's where our, our time constraint is, that this, the county has to get this vote in so that they can prepare the, the property tax bills. And that's why we're waiting or having to have this vote today or by today for that, for that particular result. It sounds to me also in this conversation, um, that in the past, we've had them separated. There's been four, four LMADs, I believe. And in the past, historically, we had them all then separately, so that if one needed to be pulled aside, it was done or discussed that way. And I think just because it's all been uniform of the C P I of all of them across the board. That's why we, they were grouped together at this point. Um, so it's just sounds to me like you have an active group of some folks in a couple of the pockets there that sent the emails out, but haven't really participated in this. And this is the educational component that they need to have. I mean, this is where they need to see and be presented and ask the questions that they don't feel have been addressed when they've sent their concern about, we don't want to be raising our fees. Um, they may not have known a dollar a month is what their fee raise is actually, the, 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 the values change. Um, so there's an education process for those that, had they participated here, listened in, responded, they, they probably would have been satisfied to, to realize it's just maybe a, a dollar, dollar and fifty a month difference. Um, so these are some of my concerns or some responses based on going through this entire process. Because every time that this is a new process for council, it is, it is a new thing that, um, we're having to educate ourselves on. I, I know that, um, when this first came up, especially with the Vista Montaña, um, it, it took this process for me to understand what this money was used for. And it went right back into their small communities. So those are just some feedback that I have on, maybe we need to change the motion that it's all but this one. I don't know, but, um, I just want to make sure I shared that in there before we took it to vote.
Okay, I think Alan, uh, I had seen your hand up. Did you still want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say a couple of things. One is, uh, you know, somebody has to maintain things out there. And the cost of maintaining those things out there is what's set forth in the engineer's report. And it's gonna take a year, uh, probably, if the HOA decides it wants to take it over, to segue from one to the other. So I would urge the council to consider, uh, approving this original staff recommendation. And during that year process, the HOA can come to the council and say, you know something? We've looked it over. We have now had an opportunity to discover what the cost of this is, and we wish to take it over as an HOA. Under those circumstances, it makes perfect sense and it can be a natural, economical and practical transition from one to the other. But determining now, uh, without, uh, you know, right before taxes, to not let the city, which has stretched financially right now to reimburse itself for the cost of providing these services to those properties, uh, seems to me, to me not as practical as the solution of progressing with the original staff recommendation and giving the property owners this year to go through this process. The motion itself right now, as I understand it, is a motion to, uh, approve the, all of the HOAs. I think that's councilmember's Parker, except no increases. I just want to clarify that.
Uh, Mayor, if I may add to Alan's comments real briefly, um, as the council has heard this afternoon from Ben and from staff. It's true that, uh, keeping up with the maintenance of Vista Montaña at the standard that I think we would all like and the standard that, uh, the neighborhood expects has been a challenge. Um, and I, I just want to make clear that regardless of what direction the council goes today, that we're committed to working with the community to explore options, uh, in the future and whatever model that may look like. But not proceeding with the, with the incremental adjustment today to allow for us to keep pace with inflation. Uh, we'll simply make that job harder, uh, for the, for the near term. And our interest is wanting to maintain, uh, those properties as best we can with the limited resources we have, which is the proposal in front of you today. Uh, while also, uh, being committed to working with the community to explore, um, what adjustments that may look like in the future. And the councilmember Parker's recommendation, there may be ways that we reduce some of the maintenance requirements, right? Um, and so I wanted to share that with the council as well, and, uh, we appreciate your consideration.
Okay, Ari?
Um, I, I, I am very clear that, um, Paco's, uh, area, you know, Bay Breeze has a slightly different, um, situation than mine, uh, at Vista Montaña. Um, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars that we're talking about, uh, for Vista Montaña, um, for the entire year. And I understand the practicality, Alan, and, uh, but I, I want to, I don't want to keep doing the same thing all the time with the problems still being there. I think the problem needs to be addressed. So if, if, uh, someone would like to make a motion for amendment, uh, for time, I could agree to something less than a year, certainly, so this conversation can happen. Ben, uh, seemed very, uh, not quite delighted, but happy to move forward with a recommendation to have meetings and educate, um, the, the, I know the Vista Montaña homeowners. So they truly understand the scope of what their LMAD covers, and it's not just the strip in the front of their, your, their yard or the tree next door. Um, it, it's bigger than that. So I would entertain a, a motion for a change in the time. Um, and I also agree with Councilwoman Gonzalez about, uh, you know, um, the Gonzalez Street, uh, LMAD. I think, um, I think they're very happy with that. And it's, uh, and, and go forward, but I'll, I'll accept any motions unless I can change my own motion.
Well, that's a good question. Uh, uh, and I'll ask Alan. Can, can Ari change her own motion without having to go through, uh, you know, another motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, most parliamentarians would say that the motion, once it is seconded, belongs to the body. It no longer belongs to the maker. So the, uh, the, you could do a couple of things. You can make a motion to divide the question. So you could vote at each of these separately if you wanted to. And you can also make, somebody can make a motion, require a second, to amend councilmember Parker's motion, in whatever way you see fit.
Okay.
I'm good with either way.
Uh, uh, you've heard the options. Is there anybody that either wants to make a motion to amend Ari's, uh, motion? Or to separate the, uh, each of the three that is before us? Uh, Aurelio?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we separate all three and address them all three individually. But I also like to make a, an amendment to her motion on that, um, the.
You gotta do. Uh, uh, Aurelio, you need to do it one at a time. So we'll, we'll do the first one, uh, which is to separate all three. Oh, Beatrice?
Can we just, um, call the question on this one and then start over with a new motion? It could be just much easier, um, than trying to, uh, record all the different, um, separations and divisions and, um, and amendments.
Okay, so.
I recall the question.
Okay, so the question's been called. So we have a motion on the floor. It was, uh, made by Ari and seconded by Trina. Uh, all those in, oh, a roll call.
Capen Gomez?
No.
Estrada?
No.
Gonzalez?
No.
Fernandez?
No.
First?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
No, motion failed. Okay, so we can start again. Is there a new motion on the floor? Lowell?
Recommend and move, uh, staff's recommendation.
Is there a second to that motion? Uh, there's no second to that motion. So is there another motion on the floor? Aurelio?
I'd like to, that we, I make, make motion to separate all individually and, uh.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion? Uh, Trina, uh, Trina seconded. Uh, discussion on this motion? Uh, Lowell?
Well, that's not what is on our agenda.
No, it's a new motion. And so we're, we're, we're working on this motion. So is there any discussion on this motion to separate all three?
I, I like, uh, what Councilwoman Gonzalez is, uh, rationale on it. I think it works. So, uh, I think it's where we want to be, practical, yet, uh, a little more time for areas that need a little bit more concern. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion?
Can I clarify, Mayor and Council? So the motion on the table would still be to move forward with the assessment without the increase, correct?
No. No.
Question, I think, and consider each of the LMAD separately?
Right, yes.
Yep, okay. That's the most.
My understanding, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion on this motion? Uh, seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Capen Gomez?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
First?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes, and so the motion has passed. So we're gonna take each, each one of these separately. Uh, the first one would be, uh, resolution confirming diagram and assessment and living assessment for fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-one for Gonzalez Street Alleyway Landscaping and Lighting Ma- Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, number PK ninety-four dash one. Uh, yes, Aurelio?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation on the Gonzalez Street.
Okay. Who seconded it?
Trina.
Trina.
Oh, Trina seconded? Okay, discussion on this motion. Seeing none, a roll call.
Capen Gomez?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Uh, now, uh, the second is a resolution, and this is regarding Bay Breeze subdivision landscaping and lighting ma- maintenance assessment district, uh, number PK zero-three dash zero-two. Do I get a motion on this one? Uh, Paco?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a second to that motion? Uh, the, the motion was to have a resolution. Yeah, that was. Yes. Okay, any, uh, discussion on this motion? Yes, Paco?
Ari, um, I, I would, sorry. Um, sorry. Um, I, I would just like to, uh, ask, uh, Ben if, uh, when, if possible, I know we're still in the middle of a pandemic. Um, I, I do appreciate everything that Parks and Rec does. Uh, I would like to spend some time, uh, for the upcoming year to be able to explain to, uh, the constituents what e- e- everything you do entails and possibly find alternatives, uh, next year to either, uh, uh, lower the cost or, or have them participate and start taking ownership a little bit of, uh, some of the maintenance work around there. If, if, if it's something that they would like to pursue.
Look, councilmember Estrada, we're definitely open to meeting, to working with the community in, in any capacity. Uh, you know, I, we, we can kind of see, see how it goes and have a meeting and, and go from there. Um, you know, I think, I think we would, we would want to, uh, explore the process of, of evaluating the costs and having a consultant do that, which is what we really need to do for all of the LMADs. Because, um, kind of a, you know, volunteer agreement, uh, is, helps. But I don't know if that can, uh, solve the problem in and of itself. Uh, you know, so we, we would, we would like to kind of pair that conversation alongside, uh, the conversation about volunteering. Uh, you know, but certainly outside of that, I'm, I'm happy to educate and, and either meet with you or, uh, people in the neighborhood to just to talk about, uh, all of the work that goes into the LMAD, if, if that's, um, if that would be valuable. Like, you know, kind of, you know, we're, we're open to, to anything, but those are kind of my, my thoughts on it too.
I appreciate that, Ben. Thank you.
Any other, uh, comments, questions? Uh, Trina?
Yes, thank you. Um, and I would appreciate it as well. I, I think it's a yes vote. And then at that point, um, see if we could have staff go out with, um, an LMAD kind of questionnaire. Um, but it needs to be feedback from the, the property owners. Um, we're not the ones that should be initiating anything from this particular part of the process. And we don't need to be falling behind and then them not responding. And then they're coming back and saying, well, you need to take care of this. So we, we have to have this as the continuity of what we need to in terms of our cost factor. But we, we also need to make sure that we, um, have the, the homework assignment given that a letter or notification to go out to the property owners to say, we've had this discussion. It's up to them to respond as a group of whatever they vote on. Because we're, we're doing a lot of work and effort pushing this for almost two hours on, you know, a dollar fifty, uh, uh, a month per unit essentially. And we don't even have them coming forward saying, I don't want the dollar fifty in our conversation right now. So we're making a lot of assumptions with a few emails that we've received that look like they're the same email. And I know physically, we've seen things. I know, Ari, you've gone out there to look at things, and we don't know what we don't know. And we need to hear from the property owners themselves. So I think that there should be the assignment that staff send a notification out, are you interested in this or not? What would it take? I mean, if you get one response, is that sufficient? Do you need a majority of response? I have no idea what that looks like, but if, I mean, after, I mean, do we have about twenty, two thousand homes in here? I, I don't know how many are in the total combined LMADs, and we're hearing from two. Out of that number, that number's really small, so we need to have more of a consensus than that if we're gonna move somewhere on this. Sorry, my front door.
Okay, any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, a roll call please.
Capen Gomez? Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes, motion passes. And now, uh, we are now on a resolution, uh, confirming diagram and assessment. And this is for the Vista Montaña subdivision landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district.
Rebecca, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Ari. Ari?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to not increase the LMAD, uh, this year. And I'd like to put a whole bunch of other caveats on it, like we'll have a study, we'll do that, we'll educate, uh, exactly what Trina was talking about. Well, let me finish with that and then I'll discuss. Okay, so that's my basic.
So we have a motion, uh, uh, we have a motion not to increase, have a study and educate. Is there a second to that motion? Aurelio, okay, uh, discussion on this motion? Uh, Ari?
Uh, it hasn't, uh, for me, it hasn't been just a few people. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people. I went out there. And you know me right now, I am, uh, uh, hanging in place. And I went out there with my mask on and was in the car and, and, and rolled with it. And, uh, and talked to a lot of homeowners. And I asked them if they rented or if they own the home. And, and the ones I talked to, with the exception of one, and it was about ten, twelve out of the couple hundred that are out there, um, uh, they, they were adamant. And I have to say, when, when I have walked that area, that's been the major point of discussion for years. But when I walked that area, it was every single person that I talked to said, well, what if we do about this thing in our front yard? And, and granted, I'm a newbie like Paco, we've only been around for, uh, you know, uh, less than two years. But, uh, during that time, and that hasn't changed. And I, I think it's a little bit of everything and, uh. And I, I think it's a little bit of everything. And a lot of it is, we need to educate all the homeowners exactly what Cap, Trina Capman Gomez said, and hey, they need to understand what's going on, because in many ways, this is a great deal for them. But if they don't believe that, then I just feel like it's just a big block and it's not practical, because every year we're gonna be falling behind, and every year we're barely asking for enough money for status quo. We need to address the issue. And it may take us a year to address the issue, but this is a good faith beginning and effort for the homeowners to see that, and then we follow it up with organization. And I would be happy, Ben, to be a part of that at any time.
Okay, Ellen, and then Trina. Uh, you're on mute.
I gotta grow up. Thank you. Um, I just want to make sure I understand the motion. The motion is to adopt an assessment for the next fiscal year, but have it the same as last year.
No. Oh, yeah, no increase, right.
No increase. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Trina?
Um, what is the fiscal impact of a zero CPI for the LMAD for that district? That's my first question.
Got a question for me?
Um, whomever's gonna give me the math on the dollar amount. Is it thirty-five hundred dollars we're talking about here?
Thirty, four, thirty-four hundred and something dollars, yeah.
Okay, so what we're doing is we're, we're withholding thirty-four hundred dollars worth of cost incurred or expenses that we could put into Vista Montaña, correct? That's, that's the dollar amount here we're voting on. Okay. And what action, if we save zero this year, will we have on the books to hear back on what to do next?
So, Councilmember Capen Gomez, it, it would, uh, it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it would decrease our operations budget and the amount we can spend on, on labor and maintenance overall. Uh, so it wouldn't help with the, you know, the, the maintenance levels. It would, it would hurt them. Uh, you know, and I'm hearing in the meantime, we're gonna kind of explore, uh, you know, a solution. And for, for, for the city, that would involve, uh, you know, real evaluation of costs and hiring a consultant to redo the engineers' reports. Um, certainly with a spirit of cooperation and open to volunteerism, uh, but primarily, that's what, what needs to happen. And through that process, you know, there would be costs incurred for the consultant itself. Uh, there, you know, which would be charged to the LMAD, and it would result in a more than likely increase in fees. It may result in the homeowners deciding to form an HOA and go their own route. Or it may result in, uh, the city continuing to facilitate the maintenance, um, with a larger budget. Uh, either way, it's gonna result in an increase in, in fees for, for the, for the community. Uh, I, I love the volunteerism spirit, uh, you know, in my, in my line of work, I work with all kinds of volunteers. And it's kind of great to get together for a weekend or two and plant trees or pull weeds, but to have a level of volunteerism where they're sustaining the, the day-to-day maintenance is, is probably unrealistic. Uh, you know, but I think that that would be great to have events sprinkled throughout the year or one time to build that camaraderie and, and, you know, in that, in that process, through an event like that where we all pull weeds. You know, we can definitely answer questions and help build that relationship. Uh, you know, so we, you know, there, there's different ways to go about it, but that would be kind of my, my input on, on realistically where, where we would be headed.
So if I summarize, um, if we vote no for the thirty-five hundred and do this study with the engineers, the unintended consequences is the LMAD could actually increase more than the thirty-five hundred that was on the table right now. Would that be a correct synopsis?
Correct, and, and the timeline for that would probably be a year, and, and that might be something that would go into the next year's budget.
Okay, Ari, I wanted to say no.
Yeah, I, I understand. There's, there's, I don't think there's any unintended consequences. I think what it is, is they need to be educated as homeowners of the scope of what this LMAD covers. I think the city needs to recover the cost of what this LMAD costs. I don't think that, that playing this hide-and-seek game, you know, with them. Uh, it, it, and, and all good intentions, with all good intentions is a positive thing. I think people are struggling in the economy right now, and anything that adds to that is, is, uh, as we know with our city budget. So I, I just think it's a, it's a better chance for community engagement. At least they will understand, we don't have to hire a consultant to have a meeting to explain to them. Uh, Ben can show them the actual budget it costs and how much it subsidizes and the scope of what it covers. And I think that's eye-opening in itself. And community participation may come from that, and also a greater understanding uh, of, of, from all those homeowners and residents that, that the city has been here doing things in their best interest. But to vote for an increase and then say no, no, I think this is our good faith effort with them to say, we need to solve the problem, and yeah, it's gonna cost you some. But it's thirty-four hundred and something bucks. I mean, I think it means something to our community to do that right now.
We'll go to Matt and then Aurelio.
And again, Council, I just want to make clear, we are absolutely willing to explore all of those options with the neighborhood. I think additional education is important. Uh, that's a journey, not a destination, right? And so continue to work with them to make sure they understand all the effort that Ben and his team put into trying to maintain that area to the standard as best we can. I do also want to make clear that our budget was built on assumptions that these assessments would be moving forward. So what we are talking about is an immediate reduction, incremental reduction in the level of service, uh, we'll be providing over the next year based on this loss of approximately thirty-five hundred dollars for that assessment district, and I just want to make that clear.
Okay, Aurelio?
Uh, yeah, it's basically what Matt, that's what I wanted to put out there with it. You know, uh, by us not assessing them this year, um, it just means for us as a city is that they're gonna get less service. Uh, and so that's what, that's the compensation that they gotta understand. That when we don't assess them to, to be able to maintain what's there now, then there's gonna be less service, uh, overall. So if they can live with less service for years, so they have the opportunity to look at all their options. If they want to be an HOA and take the burden off the city, then maybe that's best for the city. Uh, but if they do finally come to a conclusion that it's best for the city to continue going on the route, then we move forward. And we have history, and we have documentation, and we educate the community on what their rights and opportunities are now. And it's a good opportunity to take. Uh, just like Matt has said many a times, with this COVID, there's a new norm. And this is probably one of those new norms, because of the financial strains that people have right now and what they're looking at.
Okay, Trina?
Well, I can also see this thirty-five hundred dollars being less in the amount of the reserves for the particular LMAD, so that we're not having the impact with the resources. We're just impacting them on the reserves. If we were to shift things around with voting this way until such time that they come back. But I certainly don't want to wait a year for them to come back. And then that poses a question is, let's say they come back in six months' time, and they, we, we, we evaluate what the true cost is. Can we make the modifications midstream when this has to do with getting that tax rollout for the, so even if we come back in six months' time, I'm hearing, I'm seeing a nod there that, um, and we vote that, okay, the, the difference is such a number. It won't affect them until the October bill goes out for the, the next tax year. That, would that be correct then?
Does the city clerk want to speak to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna, you know, defer that one to the, um, city clerk. Uh, my understanding is these assessments are done on an annual basis and can't be done, uh, every six months.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this motion? Lowell?
Well, I think we're wasting a lot of staff time here, and, and the residents are even gonna get less service. And in the end, they're gonna have to pay more, because the, the landscape grows up and needs to be trimmed on a regular basis. And so I'm surprised that we would throw the residents there under the bus just to save a dollar ten a month when they really need work done.
Okay, Ari?
Nobody's throwing anybody under the bus. What we're doing is we're having an open and transparent conversation. Not in any way, shape or form are we wasting staff's time, and I appreciate staff's time. Uh, and, and I do have to say that, um, uh, I, I brought this forward because it wasn't one or two or five or six. It was quite a few homeowners who said, this is a problem. I understand that they are, uh, maybe reacting emotionally to the financial stresses that, uh, they're under at this time. But it's important for all of us to be aware that, that we as city council will go for, further. And if we feel, as Councilwoman Hurst said, that we are doing a disservice to them by not approving this, then that's how, I guess, we'll vote as a majority. If we feel that this is the right thing to do, then we'll vote that way. But they will have heard, uh, they will have heard us have this discussion, and it is important to be that transparent for the people of our city. I just feel it's really important. We have these discussions. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, a roll call, please.
Capen Gomez?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hurst?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Okay, so we're done with that particular topic. Next is, uh, emergency items added to the agenda. I don't think there's any. Is there?
No.
Okay, then request and scheduling future agenda items. First Lowell, then Paco.
Thank you, Mayor. I think at our next meeting, we should have a dead horse on display. And each, you know, each one of the council members can have twenty minutes of beating that dead horse until the dead horse admits that it is dead.
Don't be, don't be a bad loser. Don't be a hater. Love everybody.
Okay, Paco?
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping that maybe we could have some sort of discussion, or, uh, I, I'd like to, uh, have, uh, like, flags displayed on certain, uh, uh, events or months to celebrate, uh, either a certain segments of the population, like we did with the LGBTQ, uh, community a month ago, or it might be Veterans Day, or uh, uh, something, you know, if there's a way to honor certain segments of our population, I'd like to explore that option.
With, with flags, you're saying?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
On public property.
Okay. Uh, other requests? Uh, Trina?
Sorry, goes, goes opposite. Um, I'd like to see about a fireworks study session, um, to include the money of citations and making sure that they're collected and what we're getting there. That there is an audit of the money that's coming in from the booths, so that we know how the money is being spent and, and allocated uh, within the community. Um, the tax revenue, of course, of where the money goes, I know it goes to PD. Um, the impact of the nonprofits, of whether this is here or not here in terms of what that's about. And, um, a history, if there's any of the repeat offenders that, that get cited, because obviously, if they know where to find the illegals, they may be cited again year after year. And, um, the, the fiscal consequence, I think that some communities have this as an ordinance for the fees and the fines. And I, I think that should be something that we should have, um, more discussion on, because we're, we're hearing a lot of contentment from both sides. And we need to have the history to come together on what we need to do about this particular, um, event that divides this community. Thank you.
Okay, any other requests? I, I have a, a request. Uh, it was brought to my attention by a member in my district uh, regarding a recent cutting of trees. And as he's conversing with Ben and Suzie, I realized that Watsville does not have a tree preservation ordinance. And so I am requesting that we have such an ordinance. Okay? Uh, with that, then I will, uh, uh, close this meeting and we will see you. Oh, no, before I close the meeting. Matt, uh, we're gonna take a break. When is our next actual meeting going to be?
Our next meeting will be what would typically be your second meeting in August. I don't have the date right in front of me. Beatrice?
I believe it's August twenty-third or twenty-sixth. Is that, is the second meeting in August?
Okay, Trina?
It's August twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's August twenty-fifth.
No, it's the twenty-fifth, August twenty-fifth.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to have a break. Everybody relax and have fun in these weeks off, and we will see you on August the twenty-fifth. Okay?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.